Good morning Chairman. You could go on mute, there we go.
Good morning, good morning everyone.
Morning Chairman.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are live on Facebook and YouTube.
Good morning Shauna, we ready to move forward?
Yes sir, everything is operational, we have Dr. Doreen Williams here.
Still waiting on Commissioner Washington.
Yes, still waiting on Commissioner Washington.
Okay outstanding, we'll give the Commissioner a few moments, absolutely.
Yes sir.
It's five o'clock. Alright, there she is, I think I seen the lovely face of Commissioner Washington joining us. Commissioner, are you there?
I am.
Alright Commissioner Washington, alright, very good, very good. Look like we have both of our Commissioners here Chief Cape and we are ready to rock and roll. I think Director Johnson, I see you there in your conference room, yes sir, fantastic.
Morning.
Santana, everybody's on board, very good. Alright, very good, I see Mr. Joe Hanson and I see, it says Mark Walton but certainly that's not Mark Walton that I'm looking at. See Mr. McGuire and Kelly Littlefield, Kelly, how are you, good morning. Alright, and Director John Moretto, yes, and Mr. Dillard Sellers, Mr. Sellers, good morning. Good morning, alright, and I see Scott, Scott is on board there, absolutely. I think we are ready and I also see a tag for Mr. John Edwards, is that correct? Alright, very good, very good. Okay, at this time, it is the nine o'clock hour, today is January the 26th, 2021 and we are having a virtual planning and zoning hearing here in Rockdale County. Myself along with Commissioner Sherri Washington, Post One Commissioner, Commissioner Doreen Williams, Post Two Commissioner, we are joined by our Chief of Staff and we also have our Director of Planning and Development, Director Colonis Johnson and his team is joining us this morning and I'm calling this meeting to order. Like to start with the approval of the agenda, Commissioners.
I move to approve the agenda.
I second.
Sorry, I second that motion and you all know I'm not used to being muted, so.
Alright, so Commissioner, we're live on Facebook and the whole world is watching you, so it has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any question? All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, how about the approval of the minutes at this time Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I moved that we approve the October 27th, 2020 minutes. I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded, are there any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, moving right along with item number four, we will pause this time for the rules or procedures for public hearings with virtual housekeeping at this time. So will the rules be presented by your team Director Johnson?
Sir.
Okay, alright.
We are pulling up right now and.
Alright.
Each speaker must fill out a public comment card to register your intent to speak prior to the start of this meeting. Each item of business shall be handled in the order that it appears on the agenda, unless upon motion of the Board that the order is changed. A member of the county planning staff will present each item to the Board and will provide recommendations made by both of.
Each speaker must fill out a public comment card to register your intent to speak prior to the start of this meeting. Each item of business shall be handled in the order that it appears on the agenda, unless upon motion of the Board that the order is changed. A member of the county planning staff will present each item to the Board and will provide recommendations made by both the planning staff and the Conyers-Rockdale Planning Commission for each item of business. All Board members are required to have their video and microphone on throughout the entirety of the meeting. If joining the meeting virtually, use your full name when you log in. All Board members must state their names to identify themselves prior to speaking. The zoning applicant or the agent will have 10 minutes in which to make his or her presentation. Any portion of their 10 minutes may be reserved for rebuttal following the opposition to the application. If you are presenter, please be prepared to share your screen during your presentation and ensure that your documents are set to full screen or in presentation mode. If you have pre-registered for public comment, the Secretary will call your name when it is your turn to speak and the meeting facilitator will unmute your microphone and you will need to start your video and unmute your microphone. After the applicant's presentation, all registered speakers who wish to speak in favor of the application will then be heard. They will also be limited to a total of 10 minutes. Once the applicant has made his or her presentation and the speakers in favor of the application have been heard, the Secretary will then call upon the registered speakers in opposition to the application. The opposition shall likewise be limited to a total of 10 minutes. Once the public hearing portion is closed, no other speakers will be heard. As a reminder, speakers are to address the Board, not the applicant or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers shall be permitted. After all public comments have been heard, the Board may elect to hold general discussion. However, no decisions will be rendered at this hearing. Decisions will be made at the next regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting. This meeting is being streamed live on Facebook and being recorded. Due to audio sensitivity, please refrain from sidebar conversations or personal comments for anyone in attendance. There is a 15 second delay between the live meeting and the Facebook stream. All virtual participants' microphones will be automatically muted by the meeting facilitator. For those in attendance here in the auditorium, please do not stream Zoom or Facebook due to negative impacts on the audio. Comments submitted via Facebook will become an official part of the record.
Alright, well, thank you, thank you so much and.
And you have to be that way until you speak.
We certainly appreciate those rules and information about the virtual housekeeping as we prepare to move forward. I just want to remind everyone, if you have any devices or anything distracting our presentation this morning, would you please manage and monitor them accordingly. Moving on now, we have no old business at this time. We're moving right on into new business, item number A, future land use map case number 2021-01 at this time.
Good morning Mr. Chairman and fellow Commissioners. First item for the January 26th, 2021 BLC zoning hearing is the future land use map case 2021-01 is a request to amend the future land use map to redesignate 2021 Old Covington Highway Southeast and Zero Salem Industrial Parkway Southeast, Conyers, Georgia. From Light Industrial High Dynasty Residential, the applicant is Universal Planning and Development LLC representing the RH Properties LLC. acreage total is 14.83 acres and again the future land use category for this is light industrial. Staff, next slide. Alright, we have a couple of maps here, one is the actual current zoning map and the on the right is the future, excuse me, the one on the left is the land use, future land use map and the one on the right is our current zoning map. Alright, we have here a site plan that was submitted by the applicant that's showing the proposed layout of the townhome, the townhome development. The project is an increase from, this is actually a project that the staff as well as the Commission should be aware of. There were some conditions that, well let me back up for a second. This is one where staff had initially voted to approve this and Funding Commission initially wanted to deny it. There were some, and I think at the time the BLC recommended this to be approved with some of the conditions. And so some of the conditions, as you see in the bullets, the project has an increase, initially it was 140 dwelling units, now there has an increase of 113, so from 140 to 153. And also there are no longer two car garages, now one car garage. Location of the property, close to the Segment Salem Corridor, which is close to the Segment Road Gateway Study. Being consistent with the Georgia DOT Corridor Study, particularly on Interstate 20, there's several demands in the area for housing similar to what's going on in the metro Atlanta region, particularly in the east metro Atlanta, where market studies submitted that demonstrate a need for this type of housing. Additionally, the dynamics of the county is changing and the Rockdale Cop Plan is due for an update this year. So it's very possible that this staff will recommend approval of this again because it's consistent with what is in the future land use category, virtual land use plan, as well as what will be in our Cop Plan update that's forthcoming. Next slide is the new condition since the April 2020 ordinance. Again, so I don't want to read all of these, but as you see there are a minimum of 20 foot wide units. There are one car garages as mentioned, private streets, vehicular entrances to the proposed residential should be gated. Landscaping has obviously grass areas with sod, underground utilities and making sure that the natural vegetation remains on the property until the LDP permit. And finally, looking at providing a 20 foot landscape strip adjacent to the old Covington Highway area and there will be some landscape enhancements such as street trees, shade trees. There will be 50 foot on center and it will count toward any requirement for recompense credits for Rockdale County. These two items here are two additional, two new, I guess, condition items that were submitted by the applicant as a condition and basically, you know, there's a BJ's, BJ's store that's actually adjacent to his particular property. And one of the issues is the proposed or the potential for noise and so forth with the new residential development. These two items here are showing that as a condition of future purchasers that there will be a homeowner's association that will indicate that the subject property will be fully aware of the adjacent BJ's and so they will agree to support a 50 foot buffer reduction for inter-required buffering on the property side for the future commercial or industrial that would typically be imposed by Rockdale County. But the general plaque, the second item 3B, says there will be a statement that will indicate that the residents will understand that, that the commercial and or industrial land uses were there prior to them moving in and having this new residential development. And that because of the nature of the adjacent commercial and or industrial land uses that there will be sometimes noise and sounds that are associated with the industrial and or commercial land uses. And so basically just making sure that the new residents are fully aware of that prior to purchasing their homes. Okay, staff, the next slide is talking about the staff conditions and one of the conditions is removing the condition 1B as a variance to the Board of Adjustment. Basically, there was a requirement initially for six units. We are, the maximum size building now is actually eight units per building and the minimum size is three. So we're looking at obviously removing that condition to allow eight units for what the, for what the official would like to do. We're also looking at modifying the 2K regarding the amenity areas. The amenity areas shall include green space as a minimum, a children's playground, a dog park and an open air covered family gathering pavilion within the interior. This open air facility will be constructed using exterior building methods that will be very similar and complement what the actual homes are made of. So there will be some continuity inconsistency. Additionally, both sides of the driveway shall have green space as well. Any other amenity areas may be single or multiple areas and the residents, even though there are two sides to this development, residents of both sides of the development will have access to the amenities on both sides. It will be private, it will be gated, but they will have access through, I guess, whatever type of access card or code that they decide to have. Additional conditions from staff is wanting to reinstitute three conditions from the last April ordinance that the foundations for these structures shall be of brick and stone and if another structural material is used, it shall be faced with brick, cast stone or natural stone, no less than six inches in depth. Also, the second item condition is a minimum of 30 overflow parking shall be created throughout the development. And the third is all amenity areas should be accessible through a five foot wide sidewalks. So not just five foot wide ADA sidewalks through the roads and major roads, but all amenity areas, driveways and private drivers as well. The final one is reinstitute modify a condition from last April is that the site is restricted to townhomes only, but not to exceed 153 units. Again, initially they were looking at 140 units, but this last condition is not to exceed 153 units. January 14th of this year, the Planning Commission voted to recommend denial, but staff recommended approval of the project with the applicant's conditions, but included the stated new and revised conditions. Again, Funding Commission voted to deny it, but staff voted to approve it as long as the applicant adhere to the new conditions that I just mentioned.
Alright. That was a really good overview Director Johnson. Commissioners, and I'll start with Commissioner Washington. Well, since we're on a virtual format, I want to make sure we take it step by step and we have an opportunity to entertain all comments and concerns during this hearing. So I'll start with you Commissioner Washington, any comments or questions?
I have one question, I will have a couple of questions. The first one is the, the condition that, that they have, that everyone that purchases in that area knows that they are coming to a, what was formerly zoned at industrial site. Is this the, what has been agreed upon by BJ's? Or is this just what the builder is proposing?
Commissioner Washington, thank you for that question. But to be accurate, it's saying that not the property that they have purchased, but that the property that they purchased is adjacent to an existing commercial slash industrial. They will know before they move in that, you know, the type of land use that's adjacent to their residentially zoned property and just to know that commercial slash industrial properties sometimes have noises and other features that are just, you know, that are associated with the type of land use. So it's according to this last condition is making sure that the homeowner is aware of that, that prior to them purchasing in their residential area that there was an existing industrial slash commercial property adjacent to it.
I understand that, I guess my question is, is this what has been agreed? We spoke at length yesterday and about coming to a consensus and an agreement. Is the berm still on the table or is this what both parties has agreed to replace the need for a berm?
Well, that's still a discussion and I think during the public hearing, I would defer that to both parties. But to your point, there's been some discussions back and forth regarding the berm and the composition of the berm and the, I guess, the responsibility of it. But again, I will defer to the two, both sides of this when they do the public hearing and make their comments. But yes, that's still in play, yes ma'am.
Okay, my second question about the, well, concern, big concern of mine and I, I love all of the, you know, amenities and I've gone through great lengths of making sure that if anybody's going to bring a townhome community into this community, that they're giving us a top notch development so that people who live there can also experience the live, work, play atmosphere. One of the biggest concerns of mine is parking. I've been through other developments where they only have the one car garages and they may have designated parking spaces, but people are still parking on the sidewalks. The roads are narrow and it looks awful and I believe that that kind of congestion breeds a, it definitely doesn't look good and I don't think that it bodes well for that community. I'm very concerned because I think that one of my biggest concerns to begin with were the two car garages and the fact that they've blatantly taken off the two car garages is concerning to me. I, I mean, yesterday I was concerned about them increasing the number to 13. I've slept on that, I'm okay with that, but I'm definitely concerned about the removal of the two car garage to the one car garage. Is there anybody that can address those concerns? And especially after I just went to a townhome community, as a matter of fact, yesterday and saw what the congestion of a one car garage community. And I would have to agree with Commissioner Washington, that is my biggest concern also. I too visited a townhome community just a few days ago with one car garages and the streets are just entirely congested. And like she said, it doesn't look good, it doesn't give a good, comfortable feel to the community. So I was really concerned when, that was the first thing that was discussed today was that you had, that the two car garage had been eliminated to a one car so that you could have more homes and I really am not, I really am concerned about that too.
Commissioner Williams, I would definitely again let the applicant go into more detail, but I will just say that the width of their local roads, local streets, even with the one car garages, still should be sufficient to allow adequate accessibility for public safety vehicles. Another aspect to keep in mind though is that even with on-street parking, they will serve as a traffic calming measure, meaning you can't have folks driving 40, 45 miles up and down those local streets. And so although it may be considered unsightly, but having the on-street parking will foster in individuals having to drive at a much slower rate, which will I think, you know, from a safety measure, from kids and so forth. So definitely, I do, I'm not disputing the unsightliness of it, but it will serve as another, I guess, a benefit to it. But I would definitely defer to the applicant to go into more detail regarding that. But just keep in mind that the roads will still allow safe passage of our emergency vehicles in the event of emergency and also that having the on-street parking will act as a natural traffic calming method to, so cars will not be able to, you know, speed through that area. to so cars will not be able to uh, you know, speed through that area. So um that's something just to keep in mind. Thank you.
I think there's other ways to control the speed uh by putting in the speed humps and that kind of thing. You know, it's too easy when there's all those cars parked on the street for a kid to dart out into the street from behind a parked car and you even though you're going slow, you miss that child.
Right.
So. Not only that, when I was when I was out um this weekend, you know, it it was uh a relatively nice, yeah, people sitting on the cars and is it's just not a good look period to have all of those um additional vehicles. And even in my my vehi- my own personal situation, we have both the 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 um garage full and we have an extra car. So, you know, having a two car garage should seem like a standard, especially when we're talking about townhomes.
Well, I wanna I wanna, I think both Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams bring up very valid points here in terms of safety for the community when you think about children. You think about families and and tho- those individuals that would move into an area like this. So I think at this point, Director Johnson and please guide me. I believe we want to certainly hear from the developers at the appropriate time doing this um this hearing so they can address these concerns that's been uh put forth by both Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams. And and I too share the safety aspect of uh and I I like what Commissioner Washington just said. A two car garage is just should be a standard. Uh so I'd love to hear from the developers in terms of their position on this. Uh our concern is about traffic and safety and accessibility. And that includes our public safety vehicles as well. And I certainly did hear what you said when you mentioned to um the accessibility, the free flow of traffic for um public safety vehicles. But I want to yield at the appropriate time throughout this hearing so that we can hear from the developers and hear what they're having to say about uh both the concerns from both of the commissions. Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Are we at a com- let me go to Commissioner Washington, let me stay he- here with you tomorrow. I want to make sure that we've uh addressed a good number of your concerns. And then I'm gonna go to Commissioner Williams a- and and I want to hear if he has any additional concerns beyond what you've expressed this morning.
My only other um concern is I wanted to make sure that we hadn't taken out any of the amenities that we worked so hard to make sure that was in this package. Um, we still have, I I want to say that I heard that we still have the playgrounds. Um, we still have the open space. Um, and um, I'm not sure if this one was we were, we had the pool. But are we, did we take out any of the other amenities that we had in in this development?
Director Johnson, is it clear that the amenities that are stated in this document that's been presented this morning will in fact be the amenities that will go forward with the development? Are we clear on that?
Yes, sir. And and per the applicant's um conversation and understanding, yeah, they are looking to go forward with the actual amenities, the green space and so forth. Yes.
Sounds good. Okay, all right. Anything else from you, Commissioner Washington, at this time on this particular piece before I go to Commissioner Williams?
Final thing, um Director Johnson, is it possible that you could get me the original um what we approved originally, just so that I can make sure? Because it just seems like I'm missing something in this. And I just want to be sure before we pass this that everything that um we've had in the first one is in the second one.
Uh, yes, uh Commissioner Washington, we can get that to you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Chief Cave, I know you're taking notes. If you would uh work between Commissioner Washington and Director Johnson so that the Commissioner can get the information that she's uh needing to fill that void. Commissioner, what are your concerns?
Okay, um, well, I've already stated that the one car garages is I I was really surprised this morning to read that that had been reduced from two car to one car. Um, and we've had, you know, lengthy discussion and Commissioner Washington has covered that pretty thoroughly. That is very concerning to me. It feels like the idea is just to cram as many people in as possible and um, you know, lower the price point. And in my mind, reduce the quality of living there. And we don't want empty townhomes, you know, vacant places in the it within the development. I would not buy in a in a community that had one car garages. Um, I I don't know anybody. I I know very few families that have one car. And I realize these are townhomes are mostly geared for young uh professionals and senior citizens. Even so, nearly all of them have two cars. When there's two people living there, there's two cars. Um, the my other concern was it talked about the uh facing of the foundation, but it didn't talk about the facing on the siding of the front of the of the home. And um I would want to see that included also as as my personal preference is either brick or stone on the front of the building. Because it just gives a uh richer, deeper look. Um, in this community that I visited the other day, one one building that had, I don't know, six or eight uh homes in it, had different kinds of brick and stone, and it was very pleasing to look at. Another building did not, and it wasn't nearly as aesthetically pleasing as the one that has the brick or the stone. Um, just the fact that brick or stone is more durable, uh doesn't require painting, um makes it a better choice. Um, so that, those are really my two cons- well, three concerns. The price point, the congestion, and the including that lack of two car garages. And then the um facing on those homes.
Uh Commissioner Williams, uh thank you for those those your questions and your concerns. First one, the price points, I will definitely let the applicant address the price point during their uh their time. But in terms of the uh, I want to bring it to your attention, the one car garage is actually in our current our current ordinance. Um, you know, so I've been here, I've talked to staff and others. We are going to update um our ordinance, and I do agree that uh in certain instances, two cars do makes more sense and also they actually are following what's on the on our books now. So just to let you know, the two car minimal, that's something that we're looking at, uh it's not currently on our books. So that's something we will take into consideration for future. Uh, in terms of the actual facade and materials, as I mentioned, that the you're looking at at least fifty percent, no less than fifty percent of having brick, indigenous rock, natural stone, or synthetic stone, or some combination thereof. And so um they do mention stucco. If stucco is used, it should be no more than ten percent of it. And so we are talking about having an an aside elevation should have uh predominant masonry building material. So we we are trying to make sure, and according to our conditions, that um your concerns will be addressed by the type of uh siding or the uh materials for both the front as well as the side. So um, you know, that that issue should be addressed as well. To make sure they have some quality building materials, uh Commissioner Williams.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Williams. Are there any additional concerns that you want to highlight at this point?
Um, no, I don't think so.
Okay, very good. And and Director Johnson, that was most helpful uh for for the three of us, for you to point out uh our current ordinance and and what you and your team is looking into doing going forward. Um, to bring the point of clarity about the applicant a- applying according to what our current ordinance says, that was most helpful uh for a a a point of clarity and for the three of us to have a clear understanding as to why the applicant was applying based upon what the current ordinance says uh as relate to the uh one car garage.
But my question is, doesn't the current ordinance also say only six units? Isn't that an ordinance issue also? And aren't we increasing because we're give, we are considering granting a variance um to go outside of our current current ordinance? And I guess my point is that if we're going, if we can um modify our current ordinance um to so that the applicant can get the things that they desire in the in a subdivision or a or a establishment, then certainly we can modify or ask that they um adhere to what we are believing are are our standards um in a in a development also.
That's a great point. Thank you for that, uh Commissioner Washington. And um that's something that I think that, again, once our applicant uh comes to speak uh during the hearing portion, that could be one of the conditions if if I think the BLC uh you do have the uh purview and the authority to recommend certain conditions if you'd like to see those. And so uh we're not, we're not modifying, so you know, that's not what we're doing. But that if that's a condition that leadership feels is needed, along with going from six to eight. And if the garage, that's something that should be discussed or can be discussed with the applicant during his time at the hearing. So uh I I would defer that to the applicant.
Uh uh thank you, Director Johnson, and thank you, Commissioner Washington, because all of those points are very valid. And I think uh our Director Johnson, are we at the point now where we need to actually hear uh from the applicant?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If there are no more questions for staff, I definitely think it's time to hear from the applicant. Yes, sir.
Very good. All right, very good. So uh we have our first uh we'll have the applicant to come forward. Which one will be coming first?
Chairman, Eric Johansson will be speaking right now.
Good morning, Mr. Johansson, and I'm sure you were taking all that in from myself and Commissioner Washington and commis- yes, very good. We we're we're all three all smiles. We we appreciate you taking those notes. Those are very serious concerns for the Board of Commissioners here, uh as we all support and we embrace economic development. But we do have concerns uh that are relative to the community and the safety and the conditions and the aesthetics and all the points that both Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams point out. I'm going to yield to you and hopefully to hear from you to to uh bring some clarity to those concerns uh in terms of what you as a developers is is looking to do.
Thank you very much and good morning to everybody. Uh, our team this morning consists of Scott Hoops, he's our attorney with Mills and Hoops, and Kelly Littlefield is also a consultant with us that's there to answer questions that come up and and may chime in at the end. Just a real point of clarification, it's a future land use map change and a zoning. Does that mean we have twenty minutes total?
We we let, we we do, but let me say this, um, we we're gonna try to adhere to our rules that are already set in place. We've had a lot of robust questions and concerns from myself and the commissions. So we're gonna be as flexible as we need to uh so that we can entertain all thoughts and concerns. So uh we're monitoring the time, we're gonna be flexible and open minded so we can hear all the points that are that are necessary to hear this morning.
I'm gonna use my University of Georgia education and logic and go as fast as I can to save time for everybody else. Uh, good morning again and thank you, uh Eric Johansson, sixty-eighty-three, Shadburn Ferry, uh Beaufort, Georgia. Uh, Universal Planning Development, we are the consultants for DRH Properties, who is the property owner on this property. They've owned the property dating back forty years. Um, two thousand and one, we sold a piece of the land to Rosen Group, who ultimately developed the BJ's property there prior to two thousand and one. As y'all know, that wasn't uh previously developed as the Salem Industrial Park. It had a Terry Drive, which was a portion of the existing road you see there now that extended all the way to Dogwood. When uh the BJ's development came on board, the commission at the time unplatted the plat, if that makes sense, and they undedicated Terry Drive. So what's remaining, everybody calls a road, is really not a road, even though it has curb and gutter and water lines and asphalt and people drive on every day. It's an easement between our property and the BJ's property that is memorialized in a legal uh binding contract with an REA that was recorded as well back in that time. Uh, keep in mind, I do want to point out, I did submit for the record, one of the uses that was agreed to in the REA in two thousand and one and still an ongoing use today is to allow our property to be used for multi-family purposes. And conveniently, Rottdale County won't townhouses in RM, which is a multi-family zoning. So we are consistent with all agreements that are currently in place right now. Um, our development does include one hundred and fifty-three units. It does include single car garages. We we submitted it that way in an effort, if we needed some flexibility, as it sounds like we do based on these conversations. We are, we're less than a fifteen acre site that is constrained by that access road that goes through our site and cuts us into a one-third, two-third situation. So with that road in play, we were squeezed down. So being squeezed down, we need flexibility and and room to breathe on the site. Um, the allowable density under RM, I believe, is twelve units to the acre. We're well under twelve units to the acre, even with the one car garages. One car garages do not sacrifice quality. All they do is they provide opportunity for some of these national home builders that have both a two car garage product and a one car garage product. Um, we are not married to one car garages. And if it is the pleasure of the board to make it a condition at this time as a conditional approval to allow two car garages on the side or require two car garages, we are open to that and we have no problem with that. Our unit size will probably jump up to a twenty-two foot wide product, so therefore the one hundred and fifty-three units will drop back down into the one hundred and forty range. So we get back to where we were. Uh, as y'all alluded to, this project previously was approved back in April of two thousand and twenty. And and due to a a uh a nineteen and a twenty error, we're back where we are again, asking you guys for your support once again for our project. Uh, the average unit price in here uh will be in the two hundred and thirty and up range, which is what the average price in Rottdale County is right now, based on the new townhome products that are on the market. The DeKalb County market just next to you is uh running in that same price point for the same type of units in that uh two thirties to two fifties type price range, which we feel we could get with no problem. Architecturally on the building, since this was a concern, staff does have conditions on there that fifty percent of the front facade will be masonry. And that fifty percent, you gotta keep in mind, a large portion of that is a garage and a door and a window. So everything else that's not a garage door and a windows will be brick, stone, and all the other building materials that were approved. We have uh the the question of the berm came up, and that has been a uh a point of contention uh for a while. And just to update you on the berm, and I know the uh opposing side is on here, too, and they'll have their opinion of where things stand. But where we accurately stand on the berm is, we did propose a berm uh when we went forward with the variance hearing, because we did not have the eight units for six unit luxury uh as a condition at the time of the past rezoning. So as we went forward with that zoning or that variance meeting, we did include a berm, and we took it to the variance meeting to show it. To show a berm means we closed the road. We closed the road on the inside of the site that access easement, we open up, we have a little more room to breathe. So it it changes the dynamics. The plan that we submitted to you guys for this um hearing is the road open. So road closed is is a different layout than what you guys have before you. But I can't submit a plan with the road closed as of today because the road is open legally. We've done, we've looked at several opportun- options with the berm. And what the other side's gonna tell you is the only berm that they'll accept as of this time is the one that's thirty-two feet tall or it reaches an elevation of eight thirty-two, eight thirty-four, and eight thirty-six. And keep in mind, their loading dock is at eight oh four. So you're going from eight oh four to eight thirty-two, twenty-eight foot tall by the loading dock, thirty foot tall in the middle and and close to thirty-two feet tall over there by the gas pumps um is is where these heights go in relation to the loading dock elevation. As you get to the gas station, the elevation does increase a little bit to eight oh eight, eight ten. So the height does change. Um, that solution, just for the record, because we are talking numbers and we are talking quality, is is what I heard a minute ago. That's an eight hundred thousand dollar plus solution and requires the importation of over twenty thousand yards of dirt, which is not on the site. So we we don't have twenty thousand yards of dirt to spare on the site. We have looked at We have looked at other options with the other side to include a smaller berm and a sound wall. And we are in discussions on those. Those have not been agreed to. We're not asking you to enact any conditions of zoning that require a berm on our site. Uh, if if a berm happens, it'll be through a private uh agreement with the other side, because I think it sets bad precedent if the county. Enacts a thirty-foot tall berm as a requirement onto a property owner and it gives anybody that opposes noise or sounds or. Butterflies or anything they don't like to see the right to come in here and argue for an eight hundred thousand dollar berm. So we ask you not to impose a condition on a berm, but but let that end up being a. Private agreement between two parties, as this is a dispute between two parties. Our site does not. Need help anywhere else. It's not violating any buffer ordinances, it's not violating any setback ordinances, and it's not violating any landscape trip ordinances. So therefore, it doesn't have a need for a additional berm of that magnitude being imposed upon us. Again, to to address the concerns of Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams. Um, if it pleases the board, uh, we have no problem removing our request for a one-car garage. We are happy to be mandated to have a two-car garage. And that just gives us the flexibility on there to have our, a minimum unit size will jump from twenty feet to twenty-two feet. The Rockland product over there at Ellis Point is twenty-one feet, ten inches wide, and they have two-car garages and they have four-foot front doors. So I mean, it it it. It all works. I just want to let you know that Rockland product is twenty-two foot wide. Um, that'll push us into a twenty-two, twenty-four foot wide, so obviously the wider you go, the unit count goes down. So everybody achieves what they're looking for. Architecturally, nothing's lost on the site and our flexibility at the end of the day on this development. Um, will not sacrifice green space, will not sacrifice amenities or any of the items that were discussed previously. We've not asked for any of those to be reduced. Um, but if a berm happens and if the road goes away, then the dynamics of the site plan change. I would be happy to save the balance of my time for rebuttal or questions and if uh if I can yield the time to Scott. And Kelly at the appropriate time, um, when those questions come up. Thank you.
At this time, I'll start with Commissioner Washington. I think Mr. Johansson cleared up several of our concerns, but I don't wanna. I don't like to assume, so we have the commissioners here. I'll start with Commissioner Washington and then we'll go to Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Washington, based upon what you've heard and and concerns that are perhaps still lingering in your head. About the development and the aesthetics of the property, the things that you pointed out. What are your concerns or questions you may have for Mr. Johansson at this point?
At this point, he has um alleviated my concerns about the garage. Um, but I'd still ask that um Director Johnson provide me with the um information that I requested.
All right, very good, very good. And I know that uh Director Johnson and Chief K both are working to get you that information. Commissioner Williams.
Definitely, uh, the the fact that uh you are willing to put into car garages takes care of that concern. My other concern is about the berm, and I know there's been a lot of conversation on both sides of the issue and. I I. I would li- I don't know that we want to not make it that a condition in some way. Because of um. Just future concerns for the county. I think um. I I'm hopeful that the two parties can come up with a mutually beneficial solution. To um reduce the noise, to um. And and to work together on figuring that out, something that will um. Be affordable. I think eight hundred thousand dollars is, I I totally get that. That is not affordable. That raises the price point of the development a whole lot. But there needs to be some kind of noise barrier, sound wall, or or something. Between those two. Because who wants to live? Next to a uh where there's trucks, big trucks coming in and unloading and all of that. Which then diminishes the quality of life in that neighborhood. So I I think it is something that as a county, as a board, we need to take a serious look at how. That works best for us.
I I'll tell you, I really appreciate what Commissioner Williams just pointed out. Uh, I also want to remind both Commissioner Washington and Williams. Um, the area that we're speaking about, you do know that there is a train railroad track that runs in that area. Uh, I do believe that most of the potential residents and tenants who will take up a lease and buy property there. They will be doing that with the understanding that the CSX Railroad. Uh, runs right through there. So at any given time of the day of the night, they're gonna hear the train and the horn from the train. Uh, and all of those conditions that come with building or purchasing a home right near a railroad crossing. I do agree that there should be some uh type of buffer between BJ's and the property. I don't agree that there should be a thirty-two foot. I take eight hundred thousand dollars and round that off to a million dollars. That's a huge investment. And I'm also concerned about the precedent that we would be setting for future development in and around and across the county. We have to be very careful about that. Uh, I am hopeful, I'll use the word that you did. Um, that the two parties will get together and government, we will not have to come in and. And make that particular decision. I am prepared if that's what we'll ultimately will have to do, but. I will, I wanna be um uh hopeful that both. The BJ's landowner as well as the developer will find a common ground uh and do what is necessary, but. Two things to stand in mind about noise and nuisance. These uh particular uh home buyers are gonna be signing uh uh an agreement with the knowledge of where they're moving. And knowing that there's a CSX Railroad right there at the interest of their property. Uh, and certainly the railroad is not going anywhere. So all of those factors uh uh have to be taken in. Uh, let alone a berm and a noise barrier between BJ's and the property, so. There's some things that are just natural because of the location and that being the railroad track. Um, but I'm not sure an investment of a million dollars worth of dirt uh is something that we want to um. Create a stipulation on the developer to do. I think that's a little over the top and and that's where I am at this point, absolutely. Commissioner Williams, are there any additional concerns that you have for Mr. Johansson so we can move forward?
Um, I just have one other um comment, because as I recall from the plan that we approved in April. That road did not, was being moved, that road from Old Covington Highway to that connects into BJ's. Am I remembering that right? That that road was being moved so that the development was all on altogether? And the road was on um the east side of that.
Commissioner Williams, um, I don't know exactly. What plan was used when, because we probably have about thirty different versions of the plan. I'm not trying to be smart on it. We've looked at it every which way to Sunday with unit width, unit size, away from the land, close to the land. We even were working at one point with uh Tony Senyard, the property owner below us that owned the former Dodge dealership, and he's got the um. Ten acres over there that go out to um uh Old Covington Highway. We looked at an option of putting half the road on us and half the road on them, and then we looked at an option with all the road on us. Um, that road has the opportunity through our current REA to be relocated, but it has to have mutual consent to relocate it. Um, and we can't impede or stop traffic when it gets relocated. So there's, there's options on how to do it, so. You probably did see a plan at some point through our discussions on this with that road gone and the development laying out across the whole middle. Um, but as of right now, what we submitted, and again, it's it's still a flexible plan, because I I appreciate y'all not. Attempting to condition this to a site plan specific plan, because every builder has a different footprint and every layout requires. The freedom and flexibility to space out over our acreage, so. Yes and no, uh I guess to answer your question on that, and and there's still the opportunity for that to. Move, go away, relocate and everything to span back out. It will never sacrifice green space. It won't sacrifice. Uh, access through the site and it won't sacrifice unit counts. We're still gonna end up in the, somewhere in the one forties is where you end up with all that.
Well, well, Commissioner Williams, let me just tell you, you and I are on the same page, because I remember that as well. Uh, there was, was a plan. Yes, there was, there was a plan. And Mr. Johansson is also correct. There there's been so many uh variations of this plan and this whole layout. Um, the last time I inquired the same question that you did. It was brought to my attention from a public safety standpoint and a transportation standpoint. It's probably in the best interest that the road remains the way it is for inter- interest and access. Into the BJ's area and now that we're talking about building a residential community. When you think about fire trucks, ambulance and any possible emergency that could possibly happen over there. There have, they'll, they will have at least two major points of access to enter that property, but you're absolute right. Uh, but that was, I I remember this, this has been going on for a while and I I clearly remember, I don't, I'm not sure if Commissioner Washington remember that or not, but I. I know that you're right, you're not crazy.
Well, thanks.
Well, maybe I'm the crazy one, because I don't remember.
So um, but thank you, Mr. Johansson. Are there any other questions? Because we're trying to monitor time, but we want to make sure that we entertain everybody. And I know Mr. Dillard, uh Sellers has been standing by patiently, uh wanting to chime in on his behalf and I want to make sure that we uh. Give everybody their fair opportunity to speak. Mr. Johansson, is there anything else that you wanted to say at this point?
I do not. I just want to yield whatever time we got left over to Scott at when uh Mr. Dillard's done.
Very good, very good. Director Johnson, if I'm in order, I want to continue to move forward. Uh, in s- in the essence of time and 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 give Mr. Sellers, Dillard Sellers, an opportunity. Uh, to chime in and and then we'll come back to uh Scott, the attorney with Mr. Johansson, if if I'm following and tracking the right way.
So I'm all, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Director Johnson, are we good to bring on Mr. Sellers at this time or we need to go to Mr. Scott? Mr. Sellers, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Doug Dillard, uh with Dillard Sellers and Jeff Haymore and I represent. Rosen Conyers LLC, who is the owner of the land on which the BJ's is located. The Rosen property is contiguous to the subject's tract uh before you. Uh, as a contiguous property owner, which is the beneficiary of reciprocal deed covenants with the applicant. Our client has standing to be heard and will suffer special damages if the rezoning is approved without adequate sound protection. Between these incompatible uses, and I'll get to that in more detail in a minute. While we acknowledge that the new development is needed and desirable, so too are existing businesses such as BJ's. That provide valuable goods to residences, also existing commercial property owners that contribute to the county's tax base. Let me be clear, Rosen supports the Williams rezoning. On the condition that an earthen berm or wall and evergreens be be installed. Otherwise, we oppose the rezoning. The purpose of the condit- zoning condition is to provide sound attenuation. And physical separation between the proposed residential use and BJ's, particularly the loading dock, the loading docks and the gas canopy. We thank you for the time that each of you has given us prior to this meeting uh to share our concerns. We hear you loud and clear. That you want the parties to resolve this matter amicably and come to you with an agreed upon resolution to be made a condition of the zoning. Uh, we hope we'll get there, uh but we're not there yet. We commit to you to do everything we can to reach out an agreement with the applicant and reduce that to a zoning condition, outline the details of the berm. Which the parties will privately agree to fund. And that's important. We think we have a plan that consists of landscape berm and a wall that will reduce the noise. To levels acceptable to new homeowners. Those levels are based on a noise study my client commissioned. And submitted into the record at the planning commission. The noise study is based on actual measurements of the noise generated by BJ's measure, measured from the proposed development. The top line of the conclusion of the noise study is that by building the berm to the heights and length set forth therein. The noise from BJ's will largely be shielded. And let me point out. That uh the applicant has not done a noise study. The only noise study that's been done has been done by Rosen. Any berm length or height less than that will not be effective. And the applicant has not offered any competing noise study to refute ours. The berm is for the benefit of all parties, the landowners, BJ's and the future townhome residents. Now, the applicant applicant admitted in judicial pleading. The record before you that it was willing to install an earthen berm and evergreen planting in the interest of both parties and their current future occupants. There are also other emails and letters in the record where the applicant acknowledged the need and agreement for such a berm. Our client Joe McGuire will speak to that in just a minute. Instead, it simply proposes a zoning condition to include within the homeowner's covenants. A warning to new residents that they are buying next to industrial properties. We think that's insufficient. We all know new old property owners rarely read these covenants and besides, words on a page do nothing to actually solve the noise. Without the requested zoning condition, earthen berm barrier is all but certain that new residents of the proposed residential development. Will complain to their elected officials about the noise from BJ's. As you know, Rockdale County doesn't have a comprehensive noise orders. Now, we were not before you last April, we weren't given notice of that hearing. And that's when the property was zoned, but with defective notice, the zoning here in BJ's sued the county over the defective notice. And that's why we're back before you today. As you know, the county and the applicant acknowledged the defective rezoning and the court has sent it back to you. And we've been given proper notice of these public hearings, we would have appeared before you then and requested the zoning condition that we are talking about. We're here now and request that you only approve this rezoning with a zoning condition for the berm. Otherwise, we oppose the zoning. First, approval of the rezoning without the berm condition. Will be a denial of my client's due process rights under the Georgia and US Constitution. Second, the RM zoning is not consistent with the future land use map, which recommends the future land use as light industrial. That's why it's before you is the applicant to change the map from light industrial to high density residential. And third, and very important, the site plan before you shows fourteen buildings within, with more than six units apiece. As you know, the zoning code limits that number to six. You can't, as a board of commissioners, recommend approval of a site plan that's not in compliance with the zoning code. At least not without the applicant going through the variance process. Which including due notice and showing the variance criteria are met as set forth in your ordinance. And as you also know, and this is very important, variances go to the Board of Adjustment. Neither the planning commission nor the board of commissioners can recommend, recommend, let uh, let alone approve and hear a variance. That's led it, led limited only to the Board of 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 Adjustment and that is in your code. At this time, I'm gonna call on Joe McGuire with residents, and if there's any questions, we're available to answer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you, uh, Mr. Dillard, Doug Dillard, uh, thank you so much. I also uh do appreciate you pointing out uh and bringing clarification uh about the process of the variance. Which uh should be taken up by the the applicant uh with the Board of Adjustments. Uh, where that is something totally separate from the Board of Commissioners. You are correct there and we are clear. And we are clear on that. We are absolutely clear. So thank you for that. At this time, I think you've got Mr. McGuire there with you that's on that's going to speak as well.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm Joe McGuire. I'm with Rosen Conyers LLC. And we are the original developer and current owner of the building and land currently occupied by BJ's. When I first worked with Jay Williams over twenty years ago, working on the project and ultimately purchasing the land from him, we didn't always agree on things then. But each time we had a disagreement, we always found a way to work things out and find common ground. I had not spoken to Mr. Williams until I heard from him recently in nearly twenty years. In September of two thousand nineteen, Mr. Williams called me looking for a letter of support from BJ's for the townhouse project. As I told both Mr. Williams and Mr. Johansson that I would, I reached out to BJ's to discuss the project with them and to convey the request for a letter of support for the project. And I sent them a copy of the site plan that Mr. Williams sent me. BJ's responded and said that they cannot provide a letter of support for the project as they were currently having major issues with sound and noise complaints at other clubs near residential property. And this particular plan had many townhouses right up on the property line, but that they'd reconsider their request to support the project if they were presented with a sound attenuation plan to review. When we reengaged with Mr. Williams and I met Mr. Johansson, we immediately began discussions about how to help make the townhouse project happen in light of all things and those comments from BJ's. We then started discussions about constructing the earthen berm along the property line for sound attenuation. The great working relationship that Mr. Williams and I had enjoyed and developed twenty years ago in my mind was in play again. And I was telling everyone involved, BJ's representatives, Mr. Johansson, our partners, that Mr. Williams and I were going to figure it out and for everyone not to worry about it. On June tenth, two thousand twenty, I received an email from Mr. Johansson where he pointed out and shared with me in that email that the builder that they were working with for over one year to purchase the property and build the townhomes, Rockland Homes, had the exact same concerns with sound and noise. And in an email to Eric Johansson from Rockland Homes on June ninth, two thousand twenty, that Eric shared with me, Rockland Homes indicated in that email that the only way that they saw a proper buffer working is to create a berm between the properties. There was an attachment to that email, which was a site plan generated by Mr. Johansson that proposed an earthen berm that would run along the entire property line between BJ's and the townhomes, and that DRH Properties would build. You all have been provided with a copy of this email. So with receipt of that plan from Mr. Johansson on June tenth, two thousand twenty, stating the building that burned along the property line was recommended by their own builder, Rockland Homes, and that they were going to start working on a design, I told Mr. Williams and Mr. Johansson that I felt we're headed in the right direction and that I'd hire a sound consultant at that point to do a study just to make sure what we were doing was right. You all have been provided with a copy of the sound study. When I received the sound study on July sixth, two thousand twenty, I immediately forwarded the report to Mr. Williams and Mr. Johansson. And I was excited because I told Mr. Williams and Mr. Johansson that, in my opinion, while the report validated the sound issues were real, backup warning beeps, air brakes, forklifts loading and unloading, the sweeper trucks for the parking lot and trucks just idling at the property line, that we definitely needed physical sound barriers. But we all knew that already. And I opined that I didn't think there was anything in the sound report that was new or that was a surprise. So I felt we were there and that subject to papering this, that we had it figured out. The report told us about the noise being generated by BJ's, how high the berm needed to be to mitigate that noise, much of it in the early morning hours between four and six A.M. Mr. Johansson told me that they could build a berm as recommended by the sound report, but that they were not willing to move the townhomes planned in that area by the property line on the site, nor were they willing to reduce the number of townhomes they could build in order to accommodate the berm. So in order for Mr. Williams to agree to build a berm, Rosen would be required to accommodate about half of the physical berm on its own property and would also be required to pay for any physical site improvements needed on the BJ's Rosen property, such as retaining walls, utility and stormwater system reconstruction, and any rework of the parking lot, all which would be required. So in the same spirit of compromise and working together that I enjoyed with Mr. Williams when we first developed the project, we agreed we'd accommodate half the berm on our property. We'd be responsible for the hard and soft construction costs for the improvements needed. And it was then that I commissioned our original civil engineer, Paulson Mitchell, to study the proposal we were talking about, do a review, give me a cost estimate for the worst need work needed on the BJ side of the berm, and that Rosen would have to contribute to the project. Paulson Mitchell's cost estimate for the work on the BJ's parcel was just over two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, with soft costs that would wind up being about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we would need to contribute. We were okay with that. And at that point, I thought we were done, except for papering all of this. You have been provided with a series of emails from Mr. Johansson to me on July fourteenth, two thousand twenty, specifically on the email transmission at three thirteen P.M., where, among other things, Mr. Johansson recited to me that we clearly told your company that we would be building the berm, installing two rows of staggered evergreen trees, and providing certain architectural building upgrades to the abutting buildings and efforts of reducing sound levels inside the adjacent residential units. And that was as their own townhome builder said was necessary. The size berm he refers to in the same email is of a scale that would mitigate the noise and sound coming from BJ's, as he recites in the same email, involve the placement of approximately fifteen thousand cubic yards of earth being provided in a graded earthen berm. They have told us that they have about five thousand cubic yards of excess built from their project that would be available also to add to that. BJ's then indicated that subject to review and execution of the final paperwork for all of this, that they too were on board now with the plans for the berm and were in a position now to provide support for the townhome project themselves. So again, other than paperwork, in my mind, we're done. This is just like it was twenty years ago. We figured it out. That was the last I heard from Mr. Williams and Mr. Johansson and only heard from their attorney, Mr. Stoops, from that point forward until this past Friday, January twenty second, around five P.M., when we were invited to a conference call with Mr. Johansson and Mr. Williams and their attorney, where we were presented with another proposal for the berm that incorporated the five thousand cubic yards of excess fill that they needed to get rid of from their project. And on top of the five thousand cubic yard berm would be a sound wall that would achieve the same and desired sound mitigation that we needed from the original report. Mr. Johansson said the cost of the new proposal for this berm wall combination was estimated at about five hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars and much less than the previous plan for the earthen berm alone, which Mr. Johansson already mentioned was going to cost about eight hundred thousand dollars, but certainly not a million dollars. Again, I'm encouraged by this progress as it appears again that we found a solution. And if it's less costly and has the same result, great. I told them both and their attorney on the call that I would be available Friday night. I'd be available all weekend if necessary, and that we should try and get an agreement done. Mr. Williams and Johansson, on Saturday at eleven thirty A.M., I emailed Mr. Williams and Mr. Johansson that subject to paperwork, we wanted to move forward. Only question now was how to share the cost. So again, in trying to resolve this quickly and fairly, in that same email at eleven A.M., I told Mr. Johansson and Mr. Williams that we contribute the same amount that we were contributing in the original and more expensive proposal toward this proposal, which was two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, or nearly half the cost of this new method. Previously, our contribution for the larger berm was only twenty seven percent of the cost. This is forty percent of the cost that I offered, but I'm trying to get it done. So I expected to hear something back from them, trying to resolve this, but I didn't. So instead, I got an email acknowledgement of my email from Mr. Johansson and a statement from him stating, in contradiction to our previous conversations and agreements, and in contradiction to the July fourteenth emails that you've been provided with, saying to me that they never agreed to a berm and they don't have to build one. Yesterday morning at nine twenty six A.M., I sent another email to Mr. Williams and Mr. Johansson because I hadn't heard anything more, with an update on our progress, finalizing things on our side, and reminding them that I'm ready to talk and figure it out. I've received an email response to Mr. Johansson at ten oh seven A.M. to my email reciting again that they never agreed to a berm, that I'd be hearing from their attorney, and that is also letting me know that they're going to get their rezoning and that they will not have to build a berm if they don't want to, and that they're good with their project with or without the berm. And that's a quote. I was really taken aback by that email, especially with the call we had Friday night. I thought we're trying to figure it out. I don't know why we could not work from Friday night and through the weekend to figure it out, as I offered to come to an agreement. So I was left very disappointed by that email and the position Mr. Johansson was taking at that point. Hearing nothing all day from them yesterday. At four thirty two P.M. last night, I sent Mr. Williams and Mr. Johansson another update by email that my civil engineer signed off on the new plan with only one note about utility lines. That wasn't a big deal, but to me, more good news. So I closed that email by saying that I had been at the table all day yesterday, waiting to hear from someone, waiting to figure this out, and waiting to find common ground. But I never did. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McGuire. And I really appreciated hearing all of that. And I think that gives both of the commissioners and myself a lot of food for thought. One of the things that we always try to encourage people to do is communicate. We learn on our own that clear communication is very important. I'm going to go back now to Director Johnson, if we can. I think you have Scott with Mr. Johansson on the call here, and he wants to make some comments as well. And then we'll circle back to Director Johnson and his team. Is that correct?
Sir.
All right. Scott, are you there?
There you go. I am now.
All right. Very good. All right. Good morning. Take it away.
Good morning. First of all, Scott Hoops. I'm with the law firm of Mills and Hoops LLC, fifteen fifty North Brown Road, Lawrenceville, Georgia. We're here today under unusual circumstances. It relates to this berm issue, and that's the only thing that I care to address. Not even all the back and forth between the parties trying, as you can see, to try to come up with some type of a solution, which I think should be, you know, favorably looked at, as that there's been extensive work between the parties to actually come up with the resolution as opposed to a too bad, you can't make us do anything. So there's been a lot of work. This is an unusual case because it's a it's it's almost like a reverse nuisance case that I've never seen and that I've never seen any case law in Georgia even address this. It's always the opposite. Right? It's always a townhouse development with a proposed BJ's coming in next door and the townhouse people throwing a fit and saying they're going to make noise. I've never seen a case where somebody says we make noise and we want to keep making our noise. And if you put anything next to us, we want this monstrosity, this huge earthen berm with with trees on the top and everything so that nobody can ever hear anything coming from our property so that we can keep making whatever noise we want to make. And I don't think that that should ever be a requirement of the county as a condition of zoning to require this enormous mound of of earth dirt to be separating between the properties. If that's the case, it's going to really, and I truly believe this, developers and builders will go elsewhere. They're not going to go to Rockdale County if they believe that there's a chance that they're going to have to incur or be forced as a condition of zoning to put a twenty, thirty foot berm between all the way running down the entire property. That's just not worth it. It eats your profits. A lot of residents won't like won't like it. And 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 I say this with the, we understand the issues with the sound, which is why we've entertained all these discussions when we've tried to come up with a solution. We don't think it's frivolous. We acknowledge that there's legitimate concerns there, and we've been trying. I unfortunately bought a house right on nine eighty five years ago. And I sat there for a long time, and I really thought about whether I wanted to buy this house with the sound of the highway going behind me and trucks and mainly motorcycles, you know, as fast as they could go. And I decided to buy it. And the only person I could complain to was myself if I didn't like it. I knew it was there. Well, it's the same thing with BJ's. There's nobody that's going to buy that piece of property, especially with a road going through it right to BJ's, and be surprised one day and wake up and had no idea there was a BJ's next door. What's that sound in the middle of the night? Of course, they're going to know. There's no surprise there. And I will say this this issue that was brought up by by Mr. Dillard that that this notice on the final plat was was unacceptable, and they didn't think that anybody reads that, and that doesn't really do anything. It's important to know that that was their idea. We didn't, that didn't originate from us. That originated from the BJ's Rosen people back in the summer that said, well, what if we put this on the final plat? They they were requiring or demanding that that be a condition that is put in there. So at least there's some constructive notice on a legally recorded document that they could put in it. We didn't care. We said that was fine. It didn't really matter. Nobody's going to be surprised that there's a BJ's right there. And now, once again, it's being turned around to say, well, this is unreasonable that they would want to put that as a condition. It's came from them. It's their condition that they wanted. And so the the issue that my clients have is on flexibility. Okay, so there was a sound study done, and they keep bringing up in these meetings that there's been no competing noise study that was done. Number one, we didn't feel like a noise study was even relevant. They went out and they got the noise study, and we've been trying hard to work with them based on their own noise study. And it is not a condition or requirement that you have to go get a noise study when the property that we're going to go ahead and build is not going to create or generate any noise. So they want us to go and get a noise study of somebody else's property when they've already gone and gotten a noise study. It just doesn't make any sense. If they would like us to go get a noise study about the sounds coming from our property and what the sounds will generate and create, that's going to be a three-page report that says they don't anticipate much of any noise coming from our particular property. Otherwise, you would have to go and get a noise study done of every property that borders the property if that's somehow some condition. It's not. But let's let's look at quickly at the noise study. The noise study that they came up with is based on the World Health Organization's global recommended good night's sleep, the decibel levels of somebody that just wants a good night's sleep. And they have refused to deviate from the height of this proposed berm or sound walls. They want this to go above the second floor of the townhouse, which is why this berm is so high, and there has been zero flexibility. None. They will not go below it. There's been recommendations. Okay, well, let's, how about half of that size? No, our sound report based on the the World Health Organization's good night's sleep patterns says that we have to go and actually go higher than the second floor windows of the townhouse. Can you imagine if the county makes that a condition of zoning? And 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 future property owners, they're all going to demand that, and they're going to say, see, you did it there. And they're going to want this berm to cover any buildings or anything that they see next door. That's certainly not, I think, what is in the best interest of the county. Going real quickly to and this is the the last part. So our our side has has agreed, just as as Joe said, we've agreed to a berm. We agreed last summer to do some type of a berm. We've sent over proposed berm plans, and it's just not acceptable. Unless it achieves exactly what they want, this this incredible height, the answer's been no. Seventy five percent? No good. Fifty percent? Twenty five percent? Nothing. They want a hundred percent. Or they're going to fight. They're going to contest this. They're going to sue the county. They're going to appeal this. They're going to delay and tie up this development unless they get exactly what they want. And I should think that that also sets a bad precedence that all you have to do, if you're the neighboring property owner, is to throw a tantrum and and make unreasonable demands, or you're going to use the legal system to fight it. There were discussions and you know, concerning this variance issue and that the Board of Commissioners is not allowed to to deviate at all from the ordinances as part of the rezoning application, and that's just a misstatement and an incorrect reading of the law in the ordinances. That's not true at all. In fact, the Board of Adjustments in two thirty-eight dash seven, it says that the variances, it says that the Board of Adjustments is authorized to authorize upon application in specific cases, specific variances from the required minimum development standards is provided in the U V O. Okay, so what that means is if I have a property and I'm good with the zoning, and I want to get it rezoned, or I don't want to get rezoned, I just want to apply for some type of a condition that is outside of the conditions authorized by the ordinances, at that point, I have to submit for a variance. And the only person I can submit that to, because it's not part of rezoning, it's not being put as a condition of zoning, would go directly to the Board of Adjustments. If the ordinances, you know, if the prior commissioners wanted the ordinances to say otherwise, they would say to authorize upon application in all cases. But they say in specific cases. If you look at two thirty-eight fifteen, this specifically says that as conditions of approval, the planning commission and the department may recommend and the Board of Commissioners may impose reasonable conditions upon the approval of any amendment to the comprehensive plan official zoning map or approval of a specific use permit that it finds necessary to ensure compliance with the intent of the comprehensive plan or county ordinances. And it says such conditions may be used when necessary, you know, to prevent or minimize any adverse impacts upon property. And then they give specific examples of conditions that may be included as part of a rezoning of the property. Well, number one, increased landscaping buffer screening setback requirements. This doesn't, this isn't about a variance. This says as a condition of zoning, you can actually go in there and make changes that otherwise you would need to get a variance for. Specifically, number nine, under two thirty-eight fifteen, A nine, you can make as a condition of zoning changes to the building height, massing, which is the size, how many units, or comparable architecture design features. So you can actually change this from six to eight as a condition of zoning. There's a whole section in your ordinance that allows you to do it, not through a variance. It says you can also, under twelve, you can impose a requirement that the development shall conform to a specific site plan. Well, that specific site plan is going to have things that are outside of those ordinances. And number thirteen, any other conditions that the Board of Commissioners find are necessary as a condition of approval of an amendment to the official zoning map. So that vests you with the authority through the zoning process to impose these conditions. And you don't, it is a complete misstatement and misreading to say that the only way that you can get any changes is you have to separately go through a variance through the Board of Adjustments. That's not what your ordinance says. You have broad discretion, and we had asked you to exercise those discretions in favor of the application.
Scott, thank you. Thank you. This has been a, there's been a lot of robust conversation. I see Commissioner Washington is sitting up from her couch and heading into position so we can move forward here. I was wondering where you laying down there, Commissioner. Commissioner Washington, are there any additional questions for Scott, this gentleman at this time?
No, first I was not laying down. My feet actually got cold, so I had to get a blanket to put over my feet. And no, I think that both sides, of course, anytime you have learned attorneys weighing in, you always give both sides a lot to consider. That's why the job of being a judge is so very difficult. So I appreciate all of the input from my colleagues, and it's given us a lot to think about. But I do agree with you, Chairman, that the best resolution would be one that we don't have any input on in, and that the two parties come to an amicable solution to the problem. So I look forward to when we meet again, this, them bringing us the solution that they've come up with, because we do have two very learned attorneys on both sides that seem as if they can come up with a viable solution.
Thank you so much. And we, as you notice, and I'm getting ready to come to you, Commissioner Williams, so we can wrap this up. We have been very flexible in hearing all of this this morning. We have gone beyond our normal limits to afford everyone an opportunity to chime in and share with us. I think, Commissioner, you rocking your feet and your phone is bouncing. You got us rocking with you. Commissioner Williams, if you would, are any questions, Commissioner Williams?
I don't have any questions, but I feel like I've got a pretty broad picture of the whole issue from both sides, and I really appreciate that. I appreciate that each side has attorneys and have so eloquently shared their positions. There's a lot to think about, and fortunately, we have a couple of weeks before we make any kind of vote on it.
And thank you, Commissioner. I was just about to remind everyone that no decisions are being made today, of course, this is a hearing. And I do share the same sentiments of Commissioner Williams that this has been a very robust discussion. I also agree with Commissioner Washington with the hopes that both parties will take advantage of your time and try to make a real opportunity to sit and talk and work and find a common ground solution. So by the time that it circles back to this board, we can make a decision of economic development, we can move forward with a win-win with all parties involved. I think a lot of very valid points have come out this morning. It's time for a decision to be made. However, again, I agree with Commissioner Washington. Both parties need to get together and make an earnest effort to really seal the deal and bring this thing together. But I see Director Johnson, go ahead, Director Johnson, of Terrace.
Mr. Chair, as fellow commissioners, we do have one additional speaker, Mr. Joe Fusil, that would like, he has three minutes allotted. He wants to speak in support of the opposition.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Director Johnson. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. Seeing as you are wrapping up, I'll try and be as brief as possible within my three minutes. Let me just say, I represent BJ's. My name is Joseph Fusil with Hartman Simons, sixty-four hundred Powers Ferry Road in Atlanta. And we are here today also to voice our opposition. And again, as Doug Dillard pointed out, we're not necessarily in opposition to the multifamily zoning, but BJ's has some experience to share here and would like the board to understand and hear our concerns. The, just to point a clarification on the R E A that you heard mentioned allowing multifamily zoning. I think it's important to point out that it allows the applicant to seek multifamily zoning. I think the R E A always contemplated that the adjacent property owner would be able to voice their concerns and try and address any noise issues which have, are always present when you try and put residential property next to industrial property. And again, just here to share that based on BJ's experience, this type of thing doesn't work. When you have residential property so close to an existing industrial property, it by necessity degrades the quality of those, that development. And it may have the best of intentions to clad it in stone and brick and whatever else, two-car garages. But being in such close proximity to BJ's, which did perform a noise study really to show the adjacent property owner and the county what problems were going to present themselves. We've experienced this across the country. We have, where we are in close proximity to residential property, and we continue to operate with our normal deliveries between three and five in the morning. We are a warehouse. That's the only time that we can stock. And we've been there now for twenty years. And I agree that everybody that moves in there will know that we're there. But again, that is a risk that's being shifted to the county. The builder will be long gone. The developer here will be long gone, and the county will be stuck with disgruntled citizens who can't understand how this was allowed to occur. And again, this is not just this location. We've experienced this across the country and would like to share that with Rockdale County in hope of making the point to Commissioner Williams' point earlier. You know, you don't want vacant units. You don't want things that you can't get sold and end up rundown and degraded. They, you know, this particular development will have agreements that they're going to reduce the buffer on all sides with the adjacent industrial property, which means that it'll further degrade the quality of that living environment. And again, we can say laissez-faire, let people decide for themselves where they want to live. That's fine in the short term. In the long term, it tends to end up with vacant, degraded properties. And we've seen this across the country, and just want to voice our concerns that we've provided evidence and our constitutional rights would be violated.
Mr. Fusil, thank you so much.
I have one question. Can somebody provide me a property where the residence, the residence has been built next to a BJ's? Can I get a location of one of those developments, please? And not today, the second, but if somebody could provide me residence anywhere in the state of Georgia where they've built the some townhomes or anything to a BJ's, I would like to personally go out there and look at those developments.
Commissioner, Mr. Fusil, can you answer that? I mean, you represent BJ's. Are you familiar with any residence or developments built very closely to any of your properties that you're aware of?
Well, I can provide several, but if we're gonna find, if we're gonna be limited to Georgia, it may take me a minute or two.
I don't think she wants to be limited to Georgia. We're looking for a good and very clear example of properties, of developments that are very close in proximity to the wholesale club. Is that right, Commissioner?
Well, if it's not gonna be just, you know, my intent was to go there. So if it's in Georgia, that's fine, but you know, if not, I would definitely take a trip to Alabama, South Carolina, Tennessee, Flor- I don't know if I want to go to Florida and call it, but you know, definitely somewhere that is somewhere that I could do a day trip.
I will see what I can find in close proximity to you.
Thank you so much. I think we need to wrap up for time's sake. Director Johnson, what's your pleasure on your end?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, real quick.
Right quick. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Littlefield, so glad to see you.
There is a residential development in Conyers that sits adjacent to a warehouse-type store. It's Silver Summit, and it sits right adjacent to Lowe's. So something to consider.
Did they, but did Silver Summit come to Lowe's?
Silver Summit was built after Lowe's.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Ms. Littlefield. Very valuable information. Director Johnson?
Yes, sir. I think we, well, there's an item B that's actually associated with the same case. And so basically, what we just discussed was a future land use aspect of it, but the rezoning to go from M one to R M is about the same case, the same property. So A and B are somewhat together, just FYI.
All right. Thank you so much. I don't, is there a need for us to indulge and take that matter up? I think
Mr. Chairman, everything's the same. It's just that what we just talked about was the future land use map changing, and B would be rezoning, but it's just, you know, one's zoning, one's land use. So I don't think there'll be need to, everything else is pretty much the same.
All right, so we're gonna keep it moving. All right.
Right, so next.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, who were part of this first part. We're moving now to case number twenty-two-one-zero-two. Director Johnson?
Yes, sir. All right, next case, twenty-two-one dash zero-two is a request to rezone twenty-four-twenty and twenty-four-thirty-two Old Covington Highway Southwest, Conyers, from R one, single-family residential zoning to M one, limited industrial zoning. And the applicant is the Rockdale County for Rockdale Twenty, L L C, represented by Lincoln Property Company. This is one that was staffed as well as planning commission, both voted to approve. And just so, just to make it known, Mr. Chair and fellow commissioners, this is because of the other, the previous case, because of a clerical error on behalf of the county, having to come back before. This was also on the same agenda, the same docket. So this is, I guess, for lack of a better term, collateral damage with the previous case. So it was already approved by both staff as well as the planning commission. But because the previous case had to come back before the body, this was also on that same docket, so.
So we're doing a little housekeeping and cleaning up right here, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Making sure everything with the same date. Yeah, it's pretty much a cosmetic housekeeping change. Yes, sir.
All right. All right, commissioners, are there any questions, concerns as relate to what's before us at the moment in terms of making this right? Commissioner Washington, I'll start with you.
No, sir, I'm clear.
Commissioner Williams?
I was just trying to look at that map and see where this property is located. Maybe somebody could share that with me.
It's close to the county line, very close to DeKalb County, Commissioner Williams.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Director Johnson, are there any speakers or anyone needed to speak on this, this portion before we move on?
Well, Mr. Jordan Edwards, representing Lincoln Properties, is here, and so I think we should give Mr. Edwards a few minutes to make any comments on behalf of his client.
Good morning, Mr. Edwards. Take it away.
Good morning. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, we do. Hear you a lot of clear.
I can keep this short. We're not the applicant in this matter now. We were early last year. Now I'm just representing the property owner just to make sure that it just goes the way we expect it to. It's in an area that is in the conference of plan, classified for industrial uses. There's industrial uses right across the street, just about as far as the eye can see of the highway, railroad's right there. So it's a good use for industrial property. No conditions were needed last time around. As you said, this is just housekeeping to make sure that the advertisement's correct.
Mr. Edwards, we appreciate you joining us this morning. Director Johnson, I'm going back to you. Is there anyone else relative to this particular issue right now?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much. We're gonna move on to the next item.
Okay, next item is item D, the text amendment for twenty-two-one dash oh-three is a request to amend Section one oh-six dash one, Section two oh-six dash one, Section two eighteen dash one, and Section two eighteen dash thirteen regarding apiary and beekeeping. And this is from the county. Basically, basically, this is dealing with the beekeeping ordinance, a text amendment to make sure that the county is properly regulating for the part of the business of beekeeping. And so this was actually approved by both staff as well as the planning commission, and there's been some discussion back and forth between yourself and I think the other commissioners are well aware of this as well, but so approval from both parties.
All right, I'll start with Commissioner Washington. Commissioner Washington, any concerns on this? I do know that there's been a lot of conversation between the chief of staff and planning and development. Do you have anything to belabor this conversation?
No, what I will say is that when this was initially proposed, we did have opposition. And from what I understand, planning and development, as well as the chief of staff, did an excellent job in coming up with a forward-thinking strategy for the expansion of Did an excellent job in coming up with a forward-thinking um, strategy for the expansion of, of. Ap- apolarys, apiaries and to um, Rockdale County and um, the promotion of beekeeping. As an industry or a hobby. So I commend their hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Williams?
Okay, I reached out to David Ship. He had spoken, uh, his, he had. Reached out to us at one of our board meetings previously and expressed concerns. Um, so I wanted to make sure that he was good with everything because he is the chair or president of the. East Metro Beekeeping Association, and he said everything was good. So I'm, I think we're good.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Washington. I do want to give a quick acknowledgement to all of planning and development. And spotlight Mr. Tanner Barr, who has led the way with this particular project. And uh, we appreciate the work that he's done. Absolutely. Give him a round of applause because he's done a, a fantastic job. As one of the newest members of our planning and development. So Mr. Barr, keep up the great work. I particularly appreciate, just like what Commissioner Williams said, incorporating the sentiments of the residents, particularly Mr. David Ship. Uh, Director Johnson, I'd like to move forward here, uh, to the next item.
Hey, uh, Mr. Chair, fellow commissioners, next item is a, another text amendment. Case number twenty twenty-one dash zero-four. It's a request to amend section two thousand, two zero-six dash one. Uh, watershed protection district regarding organic farming. Again, this is uh, from the county staff, very similar to the apiary and beekeeping uh, item. Uh, this is to make sure again that our watershed protection district is uh, maintained in terms of. Uh, sustainability and the sense of nature, uh, and organic farming. Uh, practices will be allowed with certain conditions. And again, this is something that uh, was, we were approached with this and. Uh, staff has talked to several uh, professionals and several private entities uh, to give us feedback on. Issues such as um, pesticides and certain other aspects that need to be. Fertilizers and things that don't need to be utilized in the area. And so um, again, similar to the apiary and beekeeping item. We've had several discussions with the chief of staff, uh, and both commissioners. And so I think this is one that we need to, if there are no any, no comments or, or, or feedback or anything, I think we need to move forward with this one too.
Uh, Commissioner Washington, I'll start with you.
Well, um, you know, it was such a pleasure to, to speak with the um, applicant um, for this particular ordinance. And to be assured that the um, ordinance as it's presented only helps. Um, our watershed um, district and um, that uh, organic farming is designed so that it does not pollute our water. And it's an enhancement. And you know what? This is one of the things that I'm eager to embrace as a county because. This is one of the things that keeps Rockdale, Rockdale and um, gives us the opportunity to retain our quote-unquote flavor. So I'm very excited about um, this ordinance as it pertains to organic farming.
Commissioner Williams?
Um, I agree with Commissioner Washington that um, after having met with uh, the um. Couple of people from organic gardening that represent our g- organic farming. Um, I think this all opens up opportunities and becomes a valuable use of um. Some properties, you know, some types of land that doesn't have a lot of uses. Um, but I wanted to compliment uh, planning and development on their charts. That say what it, that's proposed and not proposed in green and red. I think that is extremely valuable in communicating to our community exactly what the ordinance says. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Thank you again to Director Johnson and the leadership of your team. You and Deputy Director Teresa Jacobs over in planning and development, having um, sharp people like Terrace and Tanner. And the whole team over there. I'm confident, Commissioners, that we're moving in the right direction. When we talk about the WP, particularly the water protection area, uh, and, and bringing in beekeeping and bringing in. Uh, organic farming, those are the things that uh, tend to lead us in the direction that the citizens, particularly in that area. Are in favor of as we still maintain a very strict guideline of protecting the WP. Uh, Director Johnson, uh, next item?
Uh, and quickly before we move forward, just wanted to say that uh, Ms. Robin Shannon, Robin Shannon was actually one of the uh, private, uh, nonprofit. Uh, supporters, and she wanted to thank yourself, uh, your, your fellow, the board of commissioners, staff, and the entire community. Again. She was someone that stepped up and provided us some oversight to let us know what we're doing in terms of uh. I think Commissioner Washington alluded to it, that this organic farming will do nothing but supplement and help our watershed protection. So she's an individual I think should be lauded here, so.
Thank you, Director Johnson, and you're absolutely right. Robin was a, a wealth of information and knowledge. I will say that she and her team. Yeah, but no doubt about it.
Will let you speak.
All right, next item.
All right, um, Mr. Chair, fellow commissioners, next item is uh, item F. The abandonment and the decommission of a right-of-way. This is a request to abandon and decommission a portion of Dogwood Industrial Circle. The applicant is uh, James C. Overstreet for Mr. David Miles. Uh, this is a project that uh, basically it's a precursor to a potential economic development improvement project. Uh, but the first thing first is to, and, and looking at a potential, a storage facility coming in, storage unit by Mr. Miles, who's a property owner. But the first thing is to the abandonment of the, the Dogwood Circle. It's an area that has for years have been, I guess. Lack of a better term, neglected and ignored, uh, blight, you know, blight removal, and Mr. Miles has taken it upon himself to reach out to. The various properties in the area. He's also um, indicated to staff in several meetings, um, as well at the planning commission that. Um, by this roadway being abandoned and decommissioned, and we talked to our DOT for, for the county. That agreed that um, by Mr. Miles taking over this, that he will be responsible for the maintenance. And the other aspects of, you know, maintaining and keeping this roadway um, uh, functional. Um, Mr. Miles and Mr. Mark Walsh, and I think are here for any comments, but uh, this was approved by both staff as well as the planning commission. And again, this is a, a blight area and that this is a project to help us start the process of improving uh, a blighted area.
Thank you, Director Johnson. Commissioners, I'm so glad to see this one before us this morning. Uh, I was just on this road this past weekend. As we were dealing with the livestock situation. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Washington. Commissioner Washington, any additional comments? I, I think we're all abreast on it, but you may have some, some comments on this one.
Actually, no, right now I'm, I'm clear.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Williams?
I'm good. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Walton, we certainly do appreciate you and Mr. Miles being here. The commissioners have no comments. We're processing this information. I'm glad that you're before us this morning. I will give you a moment if you need to say anything as we're trying to move this train down the track. You and Mr. Miles have anything you want to add this morning?
Uh, thank you for your consideration.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you so much. Director Johnson?
All right, um, Mr. Chair, fellow commissioners, the next item, item G. Text amendment case number twenty twenty-one dash zero-one. It's a request to amend section two three four dash seven reconstruction. Regarding detached or attached single-family residential non-conforming uses. Uh, this was a, uh, I guess an issue of kind of pulling out, changing the definition, if you will, of what is a uh. Conforming or non-conforming uses, particularly if there's a property that uh, had been um, I guess. Destroyed or impacted by fire or other damages. Um, but the stipulation is. I guess setting a standard if it's exceeded sixty percent of fair market value at the time of the destruction. That the repair and reconstructions um, process, they will be allowed to go back in and build a similar home. So pretty much uh, we broke it up. They added the B item. B says provided that a building which housed or houses. A detached or attached single-family residential non-conforming use, illegally non-conforming use. It may be reoccupied by the same use after it's been damaged to the extent of sixty percent or more. Uh, the total fair market value. Anything more obviously could be considered a loss, but if it's only sixty percent. Um, they should be able to go back and um, continue to reoccupy uh, the use. And again, this is something that um, both staff as well as the planning commission uh, supported and approved.
All right. Thank you so much, Director Johnson. Commissioner Washington, any comments on this one?
So give us, if you don't mind, um, Director uh, Johnson, for those of us who, you know, uh, can't visualize. Could you give us an example of, of what this would mean?
Um, example could be if a, a home structure that is in what's considered a. A legally non-conforming. Let's say that at the time the home or the structure was built. Um, the zoning ordinance supported it. Let's say twenty, thirty years later. Land uses and only changes in the area uh, changed, and so the house, because it was grandfather name before the new change. It would be considered legally non-conforming. It's not conforming to the current land uses, but because of the time when it was built, it was, I guess, considered legal. Let's say this particular structure were to have some sort of fire or something that caused up to sixty percent of damage. Well, a lot of times I, I think they would, uh, the, the county could. Recommend the individual to not be able to move back in or to rehab it, but uh, right now I think it's saying that. Based on it being a, a non-conforming use, but because it's a legal non-conforming use. And if it's been established that it's only sixty percent of damage, they have the ability to go back in and um. Rehabilitate the structure.
So if it's, so if it was a total loss. And that was my home, I wouldn't be able to go back and, and live there on this property that I've owned, only if only sixty percent of it?
If the, if the zoning changed. It, it depends on the zoning.
Right. So if the zoning changed and I had this house for. Years before, or it was my grandmother's house or whatever, and it burned down, I would, I would then suffer the loss and have to. To move somewhere else because I had a tragic fire.
If, 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 if it, it was a total loss and the zoning changed, yes, you couldn't go back. If it's only sixty percent, it would revert back to the original zone.
So what, what is the, the, what is the, the law now is that? You have, you, you have to, to move no matter what?
This, this amendment, this change would allow you to rebuild if it's at sixty percent.
So I'm saying, without this change, what is the law?
The law is saying that over right now that it is, let's see. Well, you have to go to the board of, currently you have to go to the board of adjustment to actually uh, I guess determining the, what the fair market value is at the time of destruction. But if there is a zoning change now, you, without this, you will have to.
Without, so without this amendment, uh, this is Terrace Petrie. Uh, without this amendment, um, you would not be able to rebuild your residence. Uh, this is actually, somebody came to us because they owned a home. That was in, was somehow an industrial zoning district. Uh, the home pre-existed the zoning. Or the zoning changed. Um, and so the property owner was not at. The property owner had an agreement to sell. However, the purchaser could not obtain and uh, a. Agreement with finance company or markets company because they could not rebuild or they had to go to the board of adjustment. What this, and so what we were asked to do was to allow. Single-family residences in that are, that, that are now non-conforming. To rebuild um, if damage occurred a hundred percent. And so uh, other communities have done this, and so that's why uh, staff went with this proposal and agreed with the. Property owner, um, who came to us. To allow residents that was burned down to rebuild.
And so I guess my, my question is, is there any way that we can increase the percentage? I just don't want somebody to not be able to rebuild their home if they have sev- a seventy-five percent or eighty percent loss. And then they can, they can't re- rebuild because we have the sixty percent um, condition on it. That's, that's my issue. So, but we, but we can talk about this another, you know, um, during our, our weekly meeting. I know that we're running over.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. And what I want to say, Tanner, don't lose your thought, but if you would. Take the commissioner up on picking this up at a lot of time. I will say this as a, a quick overall. There are several um, properties that have suffered uh, losses or been damaged due to fire throughout the county. And Commissioner, you, you have a very valid concern, but I do appreciate you asking that we can. Uh, perhaps through the chief of staff and one-on-one with planning and development to get some more of those offline questions that you're presenting. Uh, as it relates to where we are on the agenda right now, are there any additional questions from Commissioner Washington or Commissioner Williams?
No.
No.
Tanner, you, you, I want to give you an opportunity that you had something that was right there on the tip of your tongue.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So this um, proposed ordinance actually allows the cap to exceed sixty percent. Um, and, and so I just wanted to clarify that uh, before we move on.
Thank, and thank you so much. So Commissioner, I, that, I think that satisfied a good bit of what you were inquiring about. Thank you so much, Tanner. Director Johnson, uh, next item?
Yes, sir. The final item, item H is text amendment case number. Zero-two is a request to amend section two thirty-eight dash seven. Board of adjustment regarding meetings of the board of adjustment. Uh, basically, uh, this is talking about the regular scheduled meeting for the board of adjustment. Um, we want to uh, come up with a, I guess, the solution of, in the event of having a, a, a board of adjustment meeting in the same week. As a planning commission meeting. Um, at one time, looks like they were. It was basically to establish and make available to the public, uh, the time, place, and the dates of the regular meeting. Um, it is uh, looking at. Yeah, so basically saying that um, this will allow us to move the date. Uh, so we won't be conflicting with staff having a, a board of adjustment meeting on a, on two late night meetings as well as conflicting with the. With the, the TS, the IT, and the PR department as well. Um, so allow us to move the meeting from current time to a, a time that's a little more suitable. Basically, it's like looking at, it's, talking about a specific date.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, go right ahead, Director Johnson.
Right, so it basically would, removing the reference to a specific day of the month. This was something that was approved by both staff as well as the, your planning commission.
Um, in the words of, of our chief of staff, I'm tracking.
All right, very good. Are you tracking, uh, Commissioner Williams?
Well, I had to think for a minute. What does that mean? I'm tracking, but yes, I got it. I'm tracking. I'm good with it.
All right, very good. You're following us. Absolutely.
Yes.
Johnson, thank you so much. We are, uh, I think this is a good move, a good step in the right direction to. Bring all of the operations as it relates to the planning commission meetings, the uh, board of adjustments and in concert with PR. Technology services so that we can minimize multiple night meetings for our staff. And that we're all on one, uh, one page. And it also brings the continuity of information. Related to one case to the other, having to go from the planning commission, the BOC, and the uh, board of adjustments. If adjustment, it allows the continuity of information to stay leveled out as it moves. And it keeps the citizens abreast and all interested parties, commissioners on the same page. And in the words of Chief K, we'll all be tracking. Uh, Director Johnson, is there anything else relative to the zoning hearing this morning, uh, before? before we prepare to transition into our BOC meeting this morning?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, that concludes everything on our agenda.
Let me remind everyone that was a part of the zoning hearing this morning. Thank you for your time. We did exceed our time this morning to afford as much opportunity for robust conversation. No decisions will be made at this particular juncture. We'll come back at the appropriate time. And I also want to encourage those who were part of the earlier of the conversations, please communicate, collaborate, get together so that you will all be prepared on one accord as much as possible, if at all possible, by the time you come back before the Board of Commissions. That will conclude this meeting. Thank you so much, Director Johnson. Great job this morning, you and your team. You're to be commended. Thank you so much. And this concludes this portion of our meeting. And we will take a three-minute recess as we transition into the Board of Commissioners' scheduled ten o'clock meeting. So let's take a three-minute recess, Public Relations and Technology Services. We'll come back and we'll move right forward, Chief Cave, with our board meeting this morning. Thank you so much. This meeting is adjourned.
Generations back, the dangers of tobacco were a big unknown in our collective conscience. Daily Live, for the most part, slipped past the death and destruction we now connect to tobacco. Our current cultural outlook was born of knowledge, advancements, and discoveries in science, health, and best practices, and losses along the way. We now know tobacco use is the leading cause of preventable deaths and diseases in both users and non-users. In 2005, the Georgia General Assembly passed the Smoke-Free Air Act, which set the stage for prohibiting smoking and vaping at many public spaces. In accordance to the act, the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners adopted a tobacco-free campus policy in November of 2020. It applies to all county buildings and departments, effectively giving the boot to smoking and vaping on all Rockdale County premises. These are some of the locations affected: the BOC building, the administrative building, the Rockdale County Courthouse, facilities at Talent Management and Board of Assessors, the new Water Customer Service Center, the Rockdale County Tax Office, the County's Technology Services and Recreation Maintenance Building, the Transportation Department, and Rockdale County's Fire Rescue Headquarters. The tobacco-free policy applies to all Rockdale County employees and all areas of buildings occupied by those employees, as well as vehicles owned or leased by the county. It also applies to all visitors, customers, and vendors to county premises, and all contractors, consultants, and/or their employees working at county buildings, as well as temporary employees and all student interns. Smoking is defined as the act of lighting, smoking, or carrying a lighted or smoldering cigar, cigarette, or pipe of any kind. Vaping refers to the use of electronic smoking devices such as e-cigarettes, e-hukas, e-cigars, alternative nicotine products, or any other substance utilizing a vaping device. By creating a tobacco-free environment, Rockdale County moves forward in the direction of good health. Men who smoke are up to sixty percent higher risk of lost work, fifteen percent for women smokers. Studies show smokers spend up to forty minutes a day on smoke breaks. Employees who violate the tobacco-free policy could face disciplinary action up to termination. Resources are available through the county to help employees overcome nicotine struggles. The American Heart Association and others point to employee group benefits from a tobacco-free environment, including reduced exposure to secondhand smoke, a healthier, more productive workforce, a possible decrease in health benefit premiums because of a decrease in smokers, lower risk of fire damage, accidents, and occupational injuries, and setting a great example for the community. Thanks for doing your part in upholding Rockdale County's tobacco-free policy. I'm George Franco.
Chairman, anytime you're ready, we can stop the break.
All right. Oh, wow. Okay, so we're back and I think we're, Commissioner Washington, are you there? Mr. Kimble, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can.
Okay, Commissioner Washington, are you there? Commissioner Williams, are you there?
Yes, I am.
All righty, all right. We'll give Commissioner Washington a moment or two to get forward with us. Commissioner Washington, let us know when you're on board.
And Mr. Chairman, we are trying to identify a Mr. Todd R., who has entered into the chat. If we cannot identify Mr. Todd R., we will take you out of the chat. Please respond to the message that was sent to Mr. Todd R.
Thank you, Director Diaz. Thank you so much. Commissioner Washington, checking to see, are you back with us, Commissioner Washington?
Mr. Chairman, I'm trying, or I'm attempting to reach her now.
She was on that couch.
And this is the last courtesy call for Mr. Todd R. If you will please identify yourself via the chat, or you will be blocked. Thank you.
Hi, this is Roy with Technology Services.
Perfect. Thank you. We just wanted to make sure you were supposed to be in here. Thank you, Roy.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Director Diaz, and thank you, Technology Services Roy. We appreciate you giving us clear identification for security purposes. Commissioner Washington, are you on board with us?
Sir, she is not in the meeting as of yet. It looks like she left the meeting. She's gonna have to rejoin. I'll keep an eye on her.
Okay. All right. Well, we're gonna yield just a few more minutes or so to give the Commission an opportunity to rejoin. We do recognize technology can sometimes, Commissioner Williams, be a challenge, Commissioner, Chief Cave. So we want to do that and allow for Commissioner Washington to get back in.
Yes, sir.
Director Diaz, do you have another very informative PR message you want to roll? And as Chief Cave, make multiple attempts to get ahold of Commissioner Washington?
Yeah, what we'll do is we will stroke through the BOC slideshow. If you will give us a minute, we will have Satara put that up.
Thank you so much, Director.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Chief Cave.
Mr. Chairman, I just reached the Commissioner. She's currently in the process of getting back on. She had technical difficulty.
Sounds good. Very good. That's totally understandable. Thank you so much, Chief Cave. And Director Diaz, go ahead and roll that. And I think that'll put us back in the right mind frame when we do get the Commission on board, where we can move forward.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, Commissioner Washington is on her way into the meeting now.
Okay, welcome back, Commissioner Washington. Glad to have you. Can you hear us loud and clear?
I hope so. I tried to change locations in my home so I can be a little bit warmer. I don't know, so that I didn't have to have the.
Oh, you're sitting up. Yes, looking.
I don't have the, anyway, I'm here.
All right, very good. All right, well, we're gonna officially open this meeting this morning. Like to say good morning to everyone and welcome to the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners' virtual meeting this morning. We are calling this meeting to order. I have joining us this morning the Honorable Commissioner Sherri Washington, the Honorable Commissioner Dr. Doreen Williams, also our Chief of Staff as well as our county attorney this morning. Before we go into our meeting, Chief, ask just that everyone would just take a moment of silence for Director Jennifer Rutledge and her family as they are going through a very sensitive grieving process at this time. Let's take a moment of silence for the Rutledge and O'Donnell family this morning. Thank you so much. Please, everyone, we ask that you would keep Director Jennifer Rutledge and her family in your prayers. Chief Cave will be sharing some funeral arrangements during his closing remarks of the meeting this morning. At this time, we'd like to open up with a word of prayer. He's no stranger to us, and we're so glad to have him on this virtual call. He's Chief Cave's personal pastor. That's right. Pastor Al Salat from the Church of New Beginnings. Pastor Salat, welcome aboard this morning.
Good morning, Chairman Mesby and Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams. Let us pray. Dear God, thank you for reminding us in your word that we do not face the storms alone, where you are always with us, speaking peace, bringing rest to our souls. We pray for those who are facing deep losses right now, for the times that grief has covered us all. Please comfort us through the painful season surrounding those we love with your huge peace and the reassuring presence of your Holy Spirit. Today, we ask that you protect our leaders, our law enforcement, our first responders, our military, our people in the medical field, not only them, but their families as well. Lord, we pray for those who are on the front lines dealing with the general public. Comfort our pastors who are dealing with loss of family members and church members. We confess our need for you. We ask you to forgive us for trying to figure everything out on our own. To give us for picking back up what we already determined to lay down at your feet. Give us the ability to trust you when we can't trace you. Give us hearts that find rest in your presence. Give us the wisdom to seek peace and pursue it, remembering that it is only to be found in you. David says once, "I was once young and now I'm old, but I've never seen the righteous forsaken nor his seed begging for bread." Lord, this is our prayer on this twenty-sixth day of January 2021. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. 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 Thank you so much, Pastor Salat. We certainly appreciate your presence and certainly appreciate the invocation. At this time, Director Diaz, are we prepared to move forward with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Do you have a presentation of colors or?
Yes, we're sharing our screen. We are going to put up a flag.
Thank you.
You're with us.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Of the United States of America.
Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And in the future, we'll just have the Chairman say the pledge to avoid the feedback issues, and everybody can leave their phone on mute. We're going back on mute, and it's on you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Director Diaz. I appreciate your leadership. With technology, we are constantly learning, Commissioners, as we continue to move forward. Chief Cave, this is a work in progress. At this time, let's, we have. we have no special recognitions Commissioners at all. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve the agenda as published.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number five, this is the approval of the minutes from January 12, 2021. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I move that we approve the minutes of January 12, 2021.
I second the motion.
Been properly motioned and second. Are there any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. There is no unfinished business Chief Cave, so we're gonna move on to our regular agenda starting with item number 2021-38.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 2021-38 is for QK4 Incorporated. This is through our Transportation Department. This is for the Klondike McDaniel Mill Hurst Road Intersection. This is a change order number six to contract 2006-92. This is to extend the contract 12 months until January 31, 2022.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second that motion.
Been properly motioned and second. Are there any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, please.
Item 2021-39 is for Laz and Associates LLC. This is through our General Services Department. This is for the facility located at Old Covington Highway. This is in reference to RFP 20-07. This is for gutters and downspouts. Scope of work for number one on this contract, one of three recommended awardees. The total cost for this particular portion is $20,133 and it's 90 days from notice to proceed.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
My second motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 2021-40 is for Jerry L. Johnson and Associates Incorporated. This is also for the General Services Department. This is for the Old Covington Metal Building Repairs, same building that we referenced before. Also in reference to RFP 20-07. This is repainting of the building and scope of work is for number two of three of the recommended awardees. Total cost for this contract is $19,800 and again, this work will be completed 90 days from notice to proceed.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second that motion.
Been properly motioned and second. Are there any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number 41, please.
Mr. Chairman, item number 41 is Linux Development and Construction LLC. This is for our General Services Department. Again, this is for the same facility located on Old Covington Highway. This is again in reference to RFP 20-07. This is for the replacement of skylights in Buildings A and B and encompasses the scope of work for number three on this contract and four. This is, excuse me, this is three of four of the recommended awardees. Total cost is $85,840 and again, notice to this work will be completed 90 days from notice to proceed.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
A second motion.
Been properly motioned and second. Are there any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 42, please.
Item number 42 is an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning property located at zero Old Salem Road Southeast with tax parcel 075-001-0007 Conyers, Georgia 30094 from the C2 General Commercial Zoning District to the RM Multi-Family Zoning District to impose conditions upon the amendment to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is the first reading.
So I move to approve the first read and to refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission.
I second that motion.
Been properly motioned and second. Are there any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item 2021-43 is an ordinance to amend the Rockdale County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map as amended so as to redesignate property located at zero Old Salem Road Southeast with tax parcel 075-001-0007 Conyers, Georgia 30094 from the commercial future land use category to the high-density residential future land use category to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is the first reading.
I move to approve this first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission as presented.
My second motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any question?
So with these I have a question. With these ordinances, we are gonna meet with planning and development so that we can get a sense of where they are and what's proposed on them, correct?
Yes ma'am, I'll have that planned for your weekly update meetings. Yes ma'am.
Thank you so much Commissioner. Commissioner Williams, any questions on this one?
No, thank, no.
Thank you Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Washington. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you Chief Cave. Item number 44, please.
Item number 44, Mr. Chairman, is an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning property located at 2325-2385 and zero G's Mill Road Northeast and zero and zero Glenn Road Northeast, Conyers, Georgia 30013 from the R1 Single Family Zoning District to the RM Multi-Family Zoning District to impose conditions upon the amendment to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is the first reading.
So I move to approve the first read and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission.
I second that motion.
Been properly motioned and second. Any questions or concerns here? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 45, Chief Cave.
Item number 45, Mr. Chairman, is an ordinance to amend the Rockdale County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map as amended so as to redesignate property located at 2325-2385 and zero G's Mill Road Northeast and zero and zero Glenn Road Northeast, Conyers, Georgia 30013 from light industrial and medium-density residential future land use categories to high-density residential future land use category to repeal conflicting ordinances and to and for other purposes. This is the first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission as presented.
I second that motion.
It has been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions or concerns? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item number 46 is a requisition from our Water Resources Department. It's in reference to online utility exchange. It's in reference to the use of online utility exchange for positive IDs and collections. Total cost is $22,000.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second that motion.
Been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions or concerns on this item?
Is there someone there from the Water Department that can explain exactly what this will be doing?
Director Bogan, are you there?
Yes, yes, I'm here Chairman. Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you loud and clear. If you would respond to Commissioner Washington to be most helpful.
This is this is what we use to do credit checks and everything when people signing up for services and ID. For my final identifications.
Are you clear on the security process for people who are signing up with services with their new accounts?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, thank you Director Bogan. Okay, this has been properly motioned and second. And are we prepared to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you Director Bogan. Next item, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item number 47 is a requisition through our Technology Services Department. This is for Procur and its software for the Stormwater Management Department. This is in the amount of $31,655.
I move to approve this. I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
Been properly motioned and second. Are there any concerns or questions on this item Commissioners? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
Mr. Chairman, item number 48 is surplus of equipment for the Chief Superior Court Judge, Judge Mumford. Also for our Department of Talent Management, also for the Rockdale Water Resources and also for our coroner.
I move to declare these items as surplus in including the karaoke machine from Talent Management.
Oh, wait a minute. Hold it Commissioner. Are you throwing in the karaoke machine? Did you have some technical issues with it or something?
I don't know. That was that was on the surplus issues from Talent Management. I wondered what they were doing on their lunch hours.
Director, Director Holmes, are you there?
Director Moore Jackson. Or Director Holmes.
Good morning, I am here. The karaoke machine was for employee picnics, employee engagement events, so it was a microphone in order to speak over large crowds. The electricity and the wiring has gone out on the karaoke machine, but it was more so a microphone for speaking engagements.
So you throwing away or selling it off? Which is?
It's surplus.
Who's gonna buy something that's cracking and popping?
It is the wiring, so I don't know if somebody wanted to fix it, but the wiring on the back of the machine, it goes in and out.
So Commissioner Washington, you here is up for bid if you're interested.
I don't think that the world is ready for me with a karaoke machine that I can carry around with me.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any additional comments or questions on this one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item number 49 is a volunteer appointment to the Keep Conyers Rockdale Beautiful. This is for Ms. Tamika White.
And Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, I didn't know if the silence was because you were waiting for an explanation. Excuse me. Go ahead Commissioner Washington.
No, go ahead and explain.
Just a quick appointment to our Keep Conyers Rockdale Beautiful. These, this is one of the appointments that we originally had slated a with our previous liaison, but due to some coordinating with the BOC agenda, we were able to place it this week, so it's up for you all to consider and vote on.
Well, thank you.
Yes, go ahead Commissioner Washington.
I move to approve this appointment as presented.
I second the motion.
Been properly motioned and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you Ms. Tamika White for agreeing to be a part of Keep Conyers Rockdale Beautiful. Thank you so much. This motion carries. So we're we're now down to board comment. I'm gonna go right to Commissioner Washington.
Good evening you all, or is it afternoon, I think?
No, it's still morning, believe it or not.
You're gonna have to wake up Commissioner.
I can't, it seems like such a long morning. But I guess because the Bill, the Planning Commission went well. But neither here nor there, first of all, I would like to reiterate the Chairman's expression of condolences for Jennifer Rutledge and her family. We know that she's going through a very difficult season and our hearts and prayers are with her. And of course, I've conveyed my sentiments that if she needs me for anything, she is welcome to call and we, I did uplift her in prayer in my prayer meeting this morning. Next on my agenda for board comments is the economic development. We have been moving and shaking and with critic and our Economic Development Authority, our Development Authority. With the critic, we are well on our way to selecting a new executive director for our Conyers Rockdale Economic Development Council. We have engaged the services of a headhunter in that regard and they we've had our first meeting and it's been very productive because as a group, we are trying to define exactly not just what we need in an executive director, but looking at what needs in the way of economic development and strategies and things like that to help with moving us forward in this in this new age of technology and economic development. One thing that I have learned is that we're gonna have to put more money where our mouth is because we as a community are woefully underfunded in terms of economic development or the amount of money that we put on our as a community into even critics. So we really need to look at funding sources and upping our economic development initiative and like I always say, putting our money where our mouth is. But even that being said, we've had some exciting news with new developments and a couple of really exciting opportunities. And so I did once again say, put your money where your mouth, I mean, put your seatbelts on because we're ready to move and I think that the people of Rockdale County are gonna be very excited with some of the new things that we have on the horizon as far as economic development. So once again, I would like to thank all that are involved in that initiative. Going into the town hall meeting that I had on this past weekend, that was a very informative town hall meeting. I'd like to thank everybody that was involved with that. Great information was given. We focused on what was available for businesses and I know that there have been a lot of webinars or what have you, but we did have Terry Dennison from the Small Business Administration, who was the director, to go over procedures and benefits that are derived from the SBA. We also had the pleasure of having our Congressman on the call who has assured us that this is not even going to be the last of any kind of stimulus from the federal government. They're in Washington DC right now trying to hammer out even another round. I did make it very clear in this next round of of stimulus, more attention needs to be paid to communities that have less than 200,000 residents because we're suffering too and we need assistance for our residents also. So thank you, a special thank you to Congressman Johnson for weighing in, giving us the information and participating in that particular town hall. Our colleague to the east of us, Commissioner Elena Sanders was also present because this was a joint venture between she and I. Just because we didn't think that we wanted the Congressman to have to come back and we had the resources of Terry Dennison, so it just made sense for Rockdale and Newton to do it together. So I wanted to thank her for her participation and of being a co-sponsor with us in this endeavor. Finally, our Chief of Staff and our PR department did an outstanding job on making sure that all of the technology was available. We're very grateful for the ability to have this virtually and everything went off without a hitch. Chief Cave was an outstanding moderator making sure that he kept me on point, which is probably the hardest thing to do, but also made sure that the entire town hall flowed in a in a very quick but orderly and manner and the information was given. And so I was very, very grateful for all of that. Now, I haven't been able to figure out how to get a link out, but everything was recorded. but everything was recorded and it is available on the county website and our Facebook page. So if anybody wants to go back and look at that town hall, it is available. And I encourage you all to do so because a lot of really good information was given for, um, our businesses. Um, one of the things that I did want to address Chair is that we had a email questioning on the building where our SPOSS meetings are held. And they're saying that they're, they're not being televised or, um, they're, they're not, um, you can't really see what's going on in the SPOSS committee meeting. And with COVID, I would like to see if we can get technology so that these SPOSS meetings can be televised, so that the public can be, um, um, that have, can have access in as to what's going on in the SPOSS committee meeting. And, um, just utilizing all of the technology and resources that are available so that those meetings can be televised. And that is all of my board comments for today.
Outstanding, outstanding Commissioner Washington. Uh, I heard you, uh, give kudos to Chief Cave about the impossibility of handling you. Absolutely. Uh, he's doing a great job. Commissioner Williams, you're up next.
Commissioner, if I, if, Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt?
Go ahead, Chief Cave.
Mr. Chairman, for a point of order back in reference to our agenda, uh, item number twenty-two-one dash forty-eight in reference to surplus of equipment. Um, I know we had a discussion on these four matters, but, um, I did not copy a second on the, the original motion. And if it went through, I did not receive it. So for a point of order, may we please repeat the process? Um, so item number twenty-two-one dash forty-eight is surplus of equipment for the Superior Court Judge, Talent Management, Rockdale Water Resources, and also the Coroner.
I should have said something because I noticed there was not a second before we voted on it. I'm sorry. So I, I move that we, um, approve the, uh, items to be surplus.
I second that motion and I guess I was so excited about thinking about getting a karaoke machine that I neglected to second the motion. So I second the motion.
Thank you to Ms. Lee and Chief Cave. It has been properly motioned and second. Are there any additional questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, Commissioner Williams.
Well, um, welcome to my virtual world. I, I don't feel so lonely today since everybody is virtual. So I think it's, it's worked quite well to do it this way. I also want to offer my condolences to, uh, our Legislative Director and Clerk of, County Clerk Jennifer Rutledge for the loss that, uh, her family has experienced, uh, a week ago. I, um, it's, it's, it's a, a loss that will, the grieving process will take some time, I'm sure. And as it, as it has for each of us, uh, as we have processed and, um, as we move forward. So, um, I believe, uh, Chief Cave, you're going to share funeral arrangements. Is that right? Okay. All right, so, uh, we had a town hall last Friday, last weekend on Vax, on, uh, economic development and, and the, uh, funding from the federal government. Next Monday on February first at one PM, we will be having a town hall meeting to talk about the vaccine distribution. We'll also include new strains of the virus and we'll talk about COVID testing because we're still in an upswing and people still need to get tested for COVID. Um, interestingly, the, uh, vaccine distribution right now is, um, pretty slow. I notified a couple of people last night that I, the Publix was opening up their website at six o'clock this morning to, um, handle a distribution of, uh, vaccines. And apparently they were gone in just minutes. So we know it's, we know that there's, um, a desire out there to take the vaccine. And in fact, many people are really anxious to take the vaccine. So I'm hoping Dr. Rona by Monday will have, um, additional information about, uh, the vaccine distribution. I'm hoping the President will soon have a national plan for that, uh, so that, that our Governor can follow through and get that out to as all those who want to be tested. So one o'clock, Facebook Live, um, Town Hall Meeting.
And Commissioner, what day of the week? I know it's February first, but.
It's Monday.
Monday, thank you so.
It's Monday at one.
And that's a good-looking flyer too, by the way.
Say, pub, you can thank Public Relations for that.
I was gonna say, that flyer looked better than mine. It's all pretty with nice colors.
I thought it was great, but.
Competing Commissioner Washington, we are not. Go ahead.
Okay, and then the last thing, I wanted to talk about some, um, concerns that have come up on Facebook and an email that we received. Um, let me get my phone out that has that information. Um, there were questions surrounding the, uh, new community of, oh, what's that position called? Community Relations Manager. And so I wanted to address some of those, uh, questions. Um, the first thing, question they asked is we, they thought we were in a hiring freeze. So I reached out to Toni Holmes and she explained to me that we moved that language so that it said vacancy control, which means then that, um, essential, uh, personnel and director positions could be filled, uh, those that were needed, law enforcement, fire and rescue, um, that kind of thing. So, um, they wanted to know, uh, why this position had been filled. And, um, I couldn't answer that. Uh, I think it's probably not good timing to, to have filled that position currently. We had talked about that position in our budget hearings and said that we would consider it again for twenty-twenty-two in that budget. But, uh, there's, there's, um, they also want to know what the salary is, which department, and who this, uh, person is going to report to. Um, and that's interesting because there actually is no such job as a Community Relations Manager. It does not exist. It was funded through a position that previously reported to Public Relations, Marketing Community Outreach Manager. Um, and the job description was changed so that this, uh, Community Relations Manager now reports to General Services and to the Chairman. So, um, I, I hope that that answers some of those questions that were asked. And I believe the job was advertised, but only for two or three days. That was the other question. Um, I did have, uh, along with that hiring freeze, I was, I personally was concerned because of the project coordinator that was hired. And I want, I want the people in these positions to know it has nothing to do with them, that both of these people are highly qualified.
And Commissioner Williams, just a point of clarity, I see, uh, Director Holmes from Talent Management has a raise hand signal.
Okay. Let me finish this piece. Um, I, I, in my opinion, this was a job that we did not fill, should not have filled yet because we do not have programs going forward with, with, um, Parks and Recreation. And we had talked about it in, uh, again, in the budget hearings and said we would postpone that. Um, I know that it, it is a vacant, it was a vacant position. It was already on the books. Um, but Director Holmes, did you want to add to that?
I do. Um, good morning and, and thank you, um, Commissioner Williams. I just wanted to provide a, a little bit of clarity on the posting time. We did post the position for five days, which is the minimum time that we are required to post a position. Um, we did have people, um, apply for that position as well. So it was an external and internal posting, um, for that position. The other thing is, as you mentioned, just making sure that, um, everyone understands that it was an actual existing position. So we did not add a new position in the marketing position or in that project coordinator position. That is an administrative position that is assigned to the Director, um, for Rec and Maintenance. And we changed Rec and Maintenance to General Services. So the project coordinator is the administrative function for General Services. So not just necessarily Rec and Maintenance, it does support the entire function. And not just necessarily projects, it's an administrative role, um, for Director Sanders.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, and so the, are you saying that you, both of those jobs were advertised for five days internally and externally?
At least, yeah, minimum five days.
Um, so I just, I am, um, concerned that we are, we, we set a strict, pretty strict budget. I want to make sure that we are sticking to that budget. I know that we are in the process of looking for a Finance Director. I talked with, um, David Corbin yesterday from Terminus and, um, they are preparing a, uh, request for proposal for a new auditor, um, for Rockdale County. And that, um, that audit, he thought ought to be taking place, um, by sometime in March, uh, maybe the first part of April. Um, but I do think it's important that we have a complete and full audit, um, over the last few years. I have prepared and I'm in the process of preparing a report on covering some of these, um, budget items. And, um, I will have that ready in the next week or two. And we'll, we'll share that when I have it, the complete report ready. Um, I think those are my comments for today.
Well, thank you Commissioner Williams. Those were good, uh, robust comments. I always like to go back to Commissioner Washington to give her an opportunity because oftentimes she has some additional thoughts. Commissioner Washington?
Well, I'd just like to, um, also express my concern about the, um, Community Affairs, uh, position. Um, in, 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 we have, um, we went through a great deal of conversation and, um, I thought that we, um, did a good job in this budget cycle of expressing our concerns, expressing our, um, our desires. Um, I, I think I was very, very clear that in this budget cycle that, um, we needed to minimize the amount of money that we were spending, um, especially on internal, what we thought were internal needs. Um, just because we weren't, are not sure what's gonna happen with this virus. And I thought I was completely, um, transparent and, and forthcoming in saying, I would love to look at, um, adjusting the budget, maybe at the middle of the year so that we can once again see how the revenues were coming in. Um, we would have a better look at assessments to see if we could support, support this. So to, um, have this position, which we said that we clearly thought we should wait on, well, Post Two and I, um, thought that we should wait on appear, was once again disheartening because to, in my opinion, it felt as if the desires of the board were not taken into consideration. And once again, um, one of our members was, well, Chair, you were just doing what you wanted to do without regards to what we thought were priorities in the budget. Um, so I, I'm extremely disappointed in that. And, and what, and as Doreen stated, I know Ms. Mims, I know her well. I know she would do a great job in anything that she does. Um, but I am extremely disappointed that, in the way that this came about. Um, well, I'll, I'll leave that concern there. And if we need to address other issues, then we'll do that at a later time.
Thank you Commissioner Washington and, and Commissioner Williams. And I certainly do appreciate the two of you expressing your, your concerns and thoughts about all of it. Um, it was my clear understanding, of course, that between, uh, Mr. David Corbin with Terminus and our Director of Talent Management in terms of repurposing the positions that were already on board. But I'm gonna ask for a point of clarity and then we'll move on for Director, uh, Holmes to bring a point of clarity because I think there is a bit of confusion about repurposing a position that was already here and the need for what we're doing in terms of community relations and the overwhelming, overwhelming support, uh, from the community in terms of this, this positioning, uh, hitting the ground. Director Holmes?
Yes, um, thank you, um, Chairman, Madam Commissioners. And I do want to, um, clarify, we added five additional new positions. The positions that we're discussing this morning are not part of the five new positions. Those two positions were already existing positions that were funded. Um, the marketing, the community position was actually funded in two thousand seventeen. And the funds, they were allocated in the budget. So we did not add any additional, um, positions as it pertains to the two that we're discussing. The other thing is when we do our review of our compensation and classification plan, we do that twice a year. And from my office, we actually provide every single job description that we make an update to. So when we made, um, changes to departments, if we change Rec and Maintenance to General Services, then by default, anything that's attached to Rec and Maintenance automatically would become General Services. We would send that information over, um, to the Board of Commissioners. So that is all of the job descriptions where everybody had an opportunity to review them. They're actually on our website. And that includes the, um, the marketing position. The project coordinator position, again, that's an existing job description. It was an existing, um, funding source. So those things were there. Um, I just want to make sure that people aren't mixing up that we added new positions where we didn't add new positions. We added five by the BOC. This is, um, restructuring, reclassing, which we spent a lot of time talking about that from an organizational structure that we would go ahead and look at, um, structuring and fine tuning all of our individual departments. So I just wanted to share that, um, with the group as far as the addition versus a repurpose or reclassification.
Thank you.
But that, but that mark, that marketing position was intended and originally written when we opened Costly Mill, so that they could market all of our Parks and Recreation. It was never intended to be part of the board, part of the Chairman's office. And that's the position, that was, we actually, that, that was a request by the Chairman in the original budget process and organizational chart. But it, it was in the final organizational chart that we approved, that position did not exist. So the fact that the position is now, you know, it may, the funding may have already been there in a different way, but it has been co-opted now to the Chairman's office instead of the general public service of, and the idea of gathering revenue for the county from our, um, Parks and Recreation, from our programs that we do and, um, that kind of thing. So that, that's really a deep concern, especially since that salary with benefits is almost a hundred thousand dollars. Um, you know, we, we, we didn't have money for. You know, we, we, we didn't have money for $25 for employees at Thanksgiving. You know, there's, there, there are other things that should have taken place with that fund, that particular funding.
And, and to piggyback off of that, when we were presented the budget, I, I think it's disingenuous to say that it was given to us and we knew it was there. This particular position was in the Public Relations Department. This particular position, we were told, there were two positions there that were going to be, that were no longer needed there. And so, and as it was presented to us, that this position was going to be, I, I guess, vacancy control, that it was no longer needed. So for even to just be moved around to somewhere else, to me, was very disingenuous and definitely not in keeping in the spirit of us having a, what we thought was a unanimously consented to budget with all three of us being on the same wavelength with the same goals and objectives aligned with what it takes to have a unanimous budget. So once again, I feel as if we were deceived with the, the restructuring after we passed the budget, so that this particular office can get what it wanted in the budget by finagling the positions and the money around. And, and at that, at this point, I'm done.
Well, let me say thank you to both Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams. A lot of what we've just openly discussed here is more suited for executive session. However, I do appreciate you sharing your sentiments about the process. I'm excited about the new Community Relations Manager that is going to be serving the Office of the Chairman. And I think with the report coming forward, you're also going to be just as well pleased about the benefit and the impact this role is going to have on the county, impacting all of the departments throughout county government from a community relations department. As we know, PR deals with media and communications as a corporate standpoint from the county as a whole. Community relations will deal with a lot of those very unique situations that come through this office on a day-to-day basis. Again, there's a report coming forward in the future, in the near future, from our new Community Relations Manager. I also welcome the opportunity for us, if need be, if need be, to either for the two of y'all to communicate with Director Holmes, Mr. Corbin, the Chief of Staff, and if need be, to enter into executive session, which would be the most appropriate setting to delve into this more if we're talking about personnel. But I will ask that you would consult with Chief Cave and Director Holmes in terms of moving forward. But thank you so much. I hear both of you loud and clear. We're excited, the community is excited, and we're moving forward. I want to take an opportunity at this time to-
Could I just respond for a minute, please? In terms of executive session, this was not a conversation for executive session. This was a conversation about the budget. The budget is, we are responsible to the citizens of the county when it comes to the finances and how the, how the county spends its money. And that is never an executive session conversation. So that is the reason I brought it up in the board meeting, because it deals with taxpayers' money.
Thank you, Commissioner. You're absolutely correct. The portion of personnel is what I was speaking to in reference to executive session. You're absolutely right about-
I don't have any problem with the personnel. But like I said, they're highly qualified for the positions.
Right.
It was rather the process of getting those positions and hiring those folks, and the fact that, that we had agreed on a budget that did not include that particular position. And I was responding to emails and Facebook messages specific to that position.
And the fact that we, we, I feel as if we were clear. We clearly communicated through our Chief of Staff and through the acting finance department, our desires. And they were obviously not just not heard, they were disregarded, because this is the end result. So there's no other way to communicate our concerns except for in an open meeting like this. So you say that you want to have an executive session. I don't see where one is needed, because clearly, our desires are not going to be taken into consideration, especially if we meet behind closed doors.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington. I, I was not requesting an executive session. I was offering that if the two of you all saw a need for one. I'm clear on your sentiments and your thoughts, and, and we will move forward accordingly. I would suggest that the Chief of Staff, along with the Director of Talent Management and our financial advisors, Mr. Corbin, recircled with the three of you, with the two of y'all for clarity going forward. At this point, I want to now go to Director Moretto for updates from transportation and some of the projects that are excitingly moving throughout Rockdale County. Director Moretto?
Good afternoon, everyone. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. Some of the project updates that we have, the Klondike-McDaniel Mill-Hurst Road Roundabout is well on its way. We're under construction right now. That project is moving forward at approximately 40%. The High Mass Latium at Salem Road and at Sigmund Road, that project is going wonderfully well. We're around 90% complete there. Sploes 3A project is complete. We're only waiting for approximately a couple of weeks, so we can get some good weather to, you know, finish some additional stripings. Sploes 2A is complete as well. Courtesy Parkway, thank you for giving me the time to talk, because we do have, on February 4th, we have a public hearing, open house. That is by, you have to register for that. That is by appointment only. So if you, you, we also have a website that's available, you know, that discusses that. That's posted on the Facebook as well as the county website. That allows anybody to make comments as necessary. So that's the update that I have right now. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Director Moretto. I wanted to, Commissioner Washington, did you have any questions or concerns concerning these strategic projects that are coming out of transportation? Then I'm going to go to Commissioner Williams as well.
Commissioner, you're muted.
You're on mute.
Sorry. Anytime that we do things that are pertaining to transportation, I'm always- But I also want to commend Mr. Moretto, Director Moretto, and the Transportation Department. There was a pothole, there was, it was actually two potholes on Sigmund Road. And I had gone by them a couple, a couple of times, and I finally reached out to Chief Cave and asked that he have somebody come and look at them. And it was determined that they were actually in the city. But those potholes were filled by our Transportation Department. I really appreciate it, because I can't afford any more tires. So I appreciate how fast that happened and how efficient. And there was no concerns about, well, this is in the city, we can't do it. It was just done. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. I would like to say that RDOT has a wonderful team. Our team is here for the citizens. If you have any concerns about any road issues whatsoever on the county right away, please give us a call. And we try to work towards being completely responsive. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams, any comments to Director-
I was just going to say that I'm excited about that roundabout, because that is a crazy, crazy intersection there. So I'll be glad when that's finished. Thank you for following through with that.
Thank you very much. As, as probably you've already noticed, I'm very, very excited about roundabouts myself. It's from a safety standpoint, from a, from a volume-capacity standpoint, so I really appreciate that as well. I'm looking forward to it as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Moretto, and thank you, Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams, for your feedback in that area. I'm going to, at this time, go over to Director Moore Jackson from Technology Services, Commissioners. She has a brief update on some of the things that they're moving forward with across the county.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you both Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams. And just to make reference to the item that was on the agenda for today, the requisition for Pro Core Software for Stormwater Management. This requisition for Stormwater Management Department will actually cover a contract for a year of Pro Core Software and Services. And Stormwater, we worked with Technology Services Department, worked with Stormwater Management in order to assist them in the selection of this particular company for their software. And this company will assist them in the implementation of, and the management of approximately $8.3 million in upcoming Stormwater Management scheduled projects. And basically, it will assist them, this software and this company's services will assist them with the project management and also the financial management, the pre-construction, the resource management, and the platforms that will be needed in order to analyze these projects as they move forward. And here in the Technology Services Department, we will manage the actual software procurement in addition to the rollout and integration with Rockdale's networks and system, computer networks and systems in order to continue to provide assistance to Stormwater Management and all other departments within the Rockdale County Government.
Thank you so much, Director Moore Jackson. Commissioner Washington, any comments on the work that Technology Services and Director Moore Jackson is currently doing?
No, not at all. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams? Thank you so much. At this time, I'm moving on to Director Sanders for any updates coming out of General Services. Director Sanders?
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sorry. We are proceeding on with, all of the parks are open still. Senior Services is concentrating on food distribution, and they are currently working with EMA to, to work on the vaccine, vaccine distribution. So they're trying to work with them on how to get those to the homebound seniors and also different avenues to get the seniors to the site. So those are some things that we're working on in Senior Services. And then we continue to work on the building projects. We are almost complete with magistrate and probate. They received their new X-ray machine last week, so that is in and functioning for security. We also have a sound masking over there. We had some set with the tight quarters, so that is also in place. And they're testing that. The new water customer service center is, the staff has all moved in. We just have a few minor punchless items, and we're working on getting that fountain up front in working order. You can see the sign up front. We're also working on some new signage to direct people, so they know where the new facility is. Those are all the updates I have this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sanders. Commissioner Washington, any comments from Director Sanders' report?
No, but I, well, I will say that I'm very, very pleased to hear that we're trying to come up with a strategic plan for the homebound seniors that is heartening.
Commissioner Williams?
Well, that was my comment too on the senior services. I think that's really key and really important. And, you know, I, I just, anything we can do to help those seniors who are homebound and who don't have transportation is really, really needed.
Very good. Thank you so much. Thank you, Director Sanders. At this time, I'm going to Director Dan Morgan from EMA.
Yes, sir. Mostly what I have has to do with COVID, and the big thing is the vaccines. If you're not aware, RCA is a vaccine site that's being run by GNR, and you can access those appointments through their website. There also has been in the news the past couple of days, some of the vaccines are starting to come to the independent private suppliers who are authorized vaccine centers, which right now is the grocery stores and some of the pharmacies. They have it on a very spotty basis, and you can get to them through their website. You can also go to the Department of Public Health, and they have a vaccine locator tab. And you can actually have a direct link to Publix and Kroger and Walmart and CVS and places like that. There, again, it's whether or not they have them in delivery. And you heard on the news this morning, Publix had a couple of thousand spots that filled up in less than 55 minutes this morning. So it's just when you find them, I know it's frustrating, but people need to go out and keep looking on these different sites to find places to get vaccines. Remember that we are still in 1A+, which is first responders, medical personnel, and those over 65, who are right now currently eligible. And recently, out of Washington, the President is making a push for more vaccines to become available and more sites to have them. So I'm starting to hear rumblings that FEMA may start be getting involved in this. And if they do, I'm sure that will come down to JIMA and come down through the EMA. So stand by for more information as more vaccines become available.
Thank you, Director, thank you, Director Morgan. Director, Commissioner Washington and Williams, we've all received several inquiries and feedback from constituents about the vaccine occasions. I want to start with Commissioner Washington, who have several questions for you, Director Morgan, regarding some of the questions and inquiries coming from the community. Commissioner Washington?
Well, my biggest question, of course, is distribution. I would like to sit down and come up with a marketing plan so that we are highly publicizing what is available with this vaccine as more opportunities to become vaccinated, become available. I, I just think that that's necessary. And I don't have a good sense of control, or I don't, I'm not, I don't feel as if I know enough about the vaccine distribution. And if I, I think if I don't know enough, I'm sure that all of the people in the community don't know enough. So I would like to see a plan that we come up with, a, a marketing plan on how we can save our citizens. That being said, I'll, I'll be glad to, to move into those discussions this week. I know Commissioner Williams is, has this town hall, and I know that's going to be, give us a lot of information. But I would also like to look around at other communities to see what they're doing. They are handling the distribution of vaccine, because I would want for Rockdale County to be in the, in the top level of, of the amount of, of distribution per capita.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington. And just before I go to Commissioner Williams, I'm so glad Commissioner Washington pointed that out. We already have our brand-new Community Relations Manager working with Director Morgan and Ms. Susan Morgan over at the Senior Center, which is our most vulnerable population, and working on a, a, a community-wide message along with our local clergy. As you know, we had a clergy call on last week. So we're, we're bringing staff together to create a comprehensive plan, so we're just not shooting aimlessly in the dark. And we will have that information forthcoming. I think one of the biggest things that Director Morgan continued to point out, and we're hearing on the national scene, as well as the availability, the actual availability of the vaccine. And the latest report this morning that the federal government, the President's office didn't know exactly how much vaccine was available. So in terms of what we're doing out of community relations, the EMA office, as well as senior services, starting with our most vulnerable populations, the inquiries we've received here, Dr. Williams, has been mostly from seniors either not having transportation to get to a site, not knowing what to do, the difficulty of getting on to, registered to be in the lineup for a vaccine. We've, we're working on a comprehensive plan. That's just a part of what we're doing with day-to-day operations and community relations, senior services, as well as emergency management, so that we can work with our local clergy and work with our senior population to get this message out. But we've got to do it in all- this message out. But we've got to do it in an organized fashion. I want to yield to Commissioner Williams because she's got an exciting event that's coming up, a town hall, and I think it really ties into a lot of what we're talking about. Commissioner?
You know, it's interesting that we learned in the last week that there was no federal plan for distribution. So, you know, we are feeling the effects of that in Rockdale County. The governor can only do so much if there's no overall arching plan for the states. So I, I'm hoping and expecting that in the next few weeks, we're going to see a robust rollout plan for distributing. It's, and I know there's already some, some plans doing that. One of the concerns is that for some of our senior citizens, they are not internet savvy. And Helping Hands Outreach Clinic is available to help. They are working on getting word out and information. And Tolbert Morris, who's running that now, will be speaking at our town hall meeting also about what, how they can offer their assistance for people who need specific help in registering and, and getting it. But it's, it's really just a hit or miss kind of thing. In getting an appointment right now, you just have to keep trying. But I think I'm, I expect that to resolve sometime in the next few weeks, I'm hoping.
Thank you, Commissioner. You're absolutely right. And I think our goal is to get ahead of that and do what we need to do for Rockdale County and all of our residents because as it ramps up from the federal level and the state level, we've got to be in position and be prepared. And there are so many people and different disconnections here throughout our community. And I think a lot of the things that we're doing will connect those dots so that when we continue to come back out to the public, we can give them specific and concrete information as to the who, what, when, where, how, and why. And that's one of the reasons that we are really already hit the ground with community relations. Chief, Chief Cabe, I want to go to you now and bring it in, in terms of the announcements that you have. I know you're working on several things, but you have several announcement that you want to share with us this morning as we bring our meeting to a close.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, a lot of my announcements have already been handled by the other department directors and both Madam Commissioner. So thank you to everyone for being so detailed in your announcements. I would like to announce, yes, my condolences go to the Rutledge family. Reference to Mr. Rutledge's funeral arrangements, it will take place on Thursday, January 28th. The family will be accepting visitors at Tim Stewart Funeral Home in Loganville, Georgia from 12:00 PM to 1:00 PM on Thursday. And then immediately following, the funeral will not take place at the funeral home because of COVID-19 precautions. The family and anyone attending the funeral will proceed to the graveside where there will be a graveside service outside to ensure that everyone is as safe as possible. And that will take place at Melwood Cemetery in Stone Mountain, Georgia, located at 5170 East Postaleon Avenue in Stone Mountain. And that will take place just as soon as the family can get from the funeral home in Loganville to, to the location in Stone Mountain. So again, our condolences go to the Rutledge family during this difficult time. Also, Mr. Chairman, I would like to take a moment to extend a big, huge thank you to not only our public relations staff, but also our technology services staff because, as you know, we are transitioned into a virtual, complete virtual environment for this meeting and also for our, our public hearing. And I think that both departments have done an exceptional job making sure that all of the technology works properly. I can tell you firsthand this morning, early this morning, they were all testing the equipment, making sure that everything worked properly so that we could have these meetings in this manner. So thank you very much to all of those staff members who have done an exceptional job. And I know that you mimic the, the same sentiments. In addition, I'd like to also recognize our planning and zoning, or I'm sorry, our planning and development department. They have done an exceptional job going through the zoning process under the direction of their new director, Mr. Kalanos Johnson. He is doing a fine job. And also Deputy Director Jacobs can't say enough good things about our planning department. And I'm very, very happy to work alongside with them on our objectives moving forward. With that said, since everybody else took some of the items that I had, which rightfully so, it's in their, it's in their purview, I'll yield back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chief Cabe. And I do share all of those sentiments. And I'm sure both Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams and I share those sentiments about the fine work that's coming out of planning and development, technology services, as well as our PR department, particularly with this virtual platform, that COVID-19 has forced all three of us to operate in with our staff and the general public. I do want to go to public relations, Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams for a special tribute to one of Atlanta's favorite heroes, Director Diaz.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much for the opportunity. As Satara is getting ready to play the video, I wanted to share with everyone that we knew Hank Aaron was someone special, not only in our state and in our region, but across the country. And that's why at this moment, we'd like to play a video that was put together by the Braves and shared with us to tell a little bit more of the impact Hank, Hank Aaron had. Satara?
He's mostly a risk hitter. He gets at the last second. And when you think the ball is passed him, he will hit the ball quick.
Probably catches glove.
Oh, yeah. And I mean, he'll hit it hard.
The thing that people should know about Henry is how good a player he was, how good an all-around player he was. That's one of the most overlooked aspects of his career.
One of the things that all good hitters have to deal with is people say, oh, he was just gifted. He wasn't just gifted. He worked and worked and worked to get where he was.
I studied the game very much. I could tell you at the end of the season, if I hit 40 home runs, who I hit those 40 home runs off of.
And here is Henry Aaron. This crowd is up all around. He's sitting on 714.
How would Henry Aaron describe Henry Aaron's 715th homerun?
A swing, a long drive. We're back, we're back, we're back. It's gone!
In America's mind, Babe's still the king, you know. But in the minds of us to play baseball, in baseball, Hank is the king. And he'll always be the king.
Before he was the king, he was Henry Aaron from Mobile, Alabama. Alongside his seven siblings, Henry grew up in a segregated neighborhood, often at the center of racial tension.
I remember many times, you know, as a little boy growing up, that the club clan would come marching down the street for no reason, no reason at all. My mother would tell me, she said, "Son, go hide under the bed."
Through all the hate, violence, and fear growing up, Aaron had one outlet.
My father asked me what I wanted to do and I said, "I want to play Major League Baseball." My father knew good and well that, that if things stayed the way that they were, there was never going to be an opportunity.
But thanks to the courage of one man, things didn't stay the way they were. In 1947, when Aaron was 13 years old, Jackie Robinson broke the color barrier. A year later, Aaron told his father he'd be in the big leagues before he retired, a prophecy he would eventually fulfill. Henry would begin his journey in 1952, quitting high school to join the Indianapolis clowns of the Negro Leagues.
I didn't have much to care. I had a suitcase with one pair of pants. That's number one. And I had $2 in my pocket. So I had to make sure that I spent it very wisely.
The Milwaukee Braves spent their money wisely, purchasing Aaron from the clowns for $10,000. In 1953, he played for the Braves' minor league affiliate in Jacksonville, one of the first integrated teams in the Southern League.
We were not able to stay with our teammates. We wasn't able to change clothes in, in some of the ballparks where our teammates, you realized that they were not right. But by the same token, you felt like you had to do them in order to make things better for someone else who was coming behind you.
The backdrop of social injustice did not deter Aaron from excelling on the field. He won the league MVP award, earning him an invite to Braves spring training the following year. That spring, all Hank wanted was a fair shot.
Just given the chance to do the same thing that they were afforded the freedom to do. Then if I fail, then you can let me go. But just give me the opportunity.
Aaron was given that opportunity on March 14th, when he cracked the starting lineup after outfielder Bobby Thompson broke his ankle the previous day.
Charlie Grimm went into the dugout and saw Henry, but he didn't call him Henry. He just said, "Hey, you, you're in right field." He got up there in St. Petersburg and he hit a homerun, first time at bats. Now, what do you think he did the second time? Another homerun?
It was a break, no question about it. You know, I was in the right place at the right time.
After that break, Aaron never looked back. He was selected to the All-Star Game in 1955 and 56 and followed those campaigns with one of the most prolific seasons in his 23-year career.
What are you hoping for in 1957?
I hope I can gain a National League batting championship. And I also hope that I can hit 30 or more home runs and drive in 100 or more runs.
Hank exceeded his own expectations in '57, batting .322 while hammering 44 home runs and driving in 132, en route to winning the MVP award.
That was the year I honestly believe that he would have hit 400. He was getting at least two hits in almost every game.
One hit that season Aaron would never forget would come on September 23rd in the 11th inning of a tie game with the Cardinals with a chance to clinch the pennant.
The pitch to Henry Aaron, a swing and a drive back into center field, way back towards the wall. It's a homerun! The Braves are the champions of the National League!
I dreamed about that. I used to think about, well, wouldn't it be nice if you hit a pillow plentin', a tie-breaking homerun and skip around the bases, you know? It was a tremendous moment for me.
The blast propelled the Braves to a meeting with the defending champion Yankees in the Fall Classic, a stage to, no one's surprise, Aaron excelled.
And Rock, it's a terrific drive, 430 feet into the bullpen and left center. With that blast, third homer, the series for Aaron.
The Braves won the World Series in seven games. Aaron batted .393 and drove in seven runs, helping him draw adoration from fans and respect from peers.
I think the best hitter maybe right now that we're talking is Henry Aaron right now in baseball. I think he's, he's able to wait and keep his hands back and swing real quick at the ball.
Aaron was consistently great for two decades, making the All-Star Game every year from 1955 to 1975. He would belt 30 or more home runs in 15 different seasons and was a 300 hitter in 14 different years. But for those who played with and against Hank, he was much more than a great slugger.
A lot of things weren't recognized that Aaron did because he did it with such ease.
Think about how many hits he has. 3,700 and somewhat hits, right? Close to 3,800. You take away the 755 home runs he hit, and he's still got 3,000 hits.
Aaron hit at least 40 home runs in eight seasons. And by the end of 1973, he had 713 career home runs, just one shy of Babe Ruth's revered record, a record some people did not want him to break.
And I got millions and millions of pieces of mail from people that were resentful simply because of the fact that who I was and they just was not ready for a black man to break that record. I mean, he showed us to hate mail, yeah. Some of it. It was nasty. Some of it was just way nasty. And it wasn't all from the South. It was from all over the country. Probably half of them were illegitimate, but one could be for real and that would be the end.
Through it all, Henry Aaron persevered. His pursuit of baseball's most cherished record continued. And on opening day of 1974, he took his place alongside Babe Ruth.
3-1 pitch. There's the drive into left field. That ball is going, going, and out of here! Henry Aaron has just tied Babe Ruth in the all-time homerun parade. The record, they said that couldn't be reached, has just been reached by Henry Aaron.
Four days later, Aaron and the Braves headed home to Atlanta.
Hit it for me, Hank. Hit it my way.
On April 8th, 1974, the Braves hosted the Dodgers in the first home game of the season, with Aaron one swing away from surpassing the Sultan of Swat.
Someone told me later on, said it was cold. I didn't feel a thing. They said it was drizzling. I didn't feel a thing. Hank told me, you know, that, what he was gonna do. He said, "I'm tired of this. I'm gonna get this over with right now."
Here's the pitch by Downing. Swinging. There's a drive into left center field. That ball is gonna be... Out of here! It's gone! It's 715! There's a new homerun champion of all time, and it's Henry Aaron!
Thought about, you've come a long ways, baby. You know, I mean, from Mobile, Alabama, all the way to breaking one of the most prestigious records in baseball. You know, I feel very proud of myself. I don't know how my mother ever got to understand, but I guess she was bent on being out there, you know, which was fine with me. But she, she gave me the biggest, tightest hug I ever had in my life. I, I don't know how I got loose.
He had tears on his cheek and tears in his eyes. And I remember being stunned. I said, "Henry Aaron is crying."
What a marvelous moment for baseball. What a marvelous moment for Atlanta and the state of Georgia. What a marvelous moment for the country and the world. A black man is getting a standing ovation in the deep south for breaking a record of an all-time baseball idol.
I just thank God it's all over with. Thank you very much.
At the time he called it quits, Aaron was second all-time in runs and hits and had more home runs, RBIs, and total bases than anyone who ever played the game, a tribute to the remarkable quality and consistency of his career.
The way to fame is like the way to heaven, through much tribulations. It had been for me, to quote a very popular song, "A long and winding road."
He was a pillar of strength. And if anybody, black, white, red, or technicolor has a problem, you can look at Henry Aaron and say, "Look at the strength he had."
I think that people can look at me and say, you know, he was a great baseball player, but he was even a greater human being.
Mr. Chairman and Madam Commissioners, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to share stories like this. And we also would be remiss if we didn't take the time again to thank the Major League Baseball Network and the Atlanta Braves for allowing us to show this video. And this is a perfect segue to inviting the community to tune in starting in February. In February, we will be kicking off our Black History Month highlight. We are working with plenty of community partners to make sure we capture the essence of black history in Rockdale and culminating with the celebration of Juneteenth and educating the community on what Juneteenth not only means in the nation, but what also, what it means here locally in Rockdale. So thank you all so much for allowing us to share this moment. And please stay tuned. Tuesdays, the first Tuesday in February will be our first Black History video, and it will take us all the way to Juneteenth. And two last things I wanted the, the public to know is to keep in mind and mark their calendars. For March 19th, we will be holding our State of the County address, and they can stream that on Facebook and also on our website. And two last courtesy reminders, don't forget to join us on February 1st at 1:00 PM, again, for Commissioner Williams's event regarding the vaccination and the process here in Rockdale County. And lastly, we will also be holding a Courtesy Parkway Public Hearing on the 4th, which is Thursday, from 4:00 to 6:00 over at Springfield Baptist Church. Thank you so much for your time and have a great rest of your afternoon.
Thank you, Director Diaz. And I certainly do appreciate you honoring the request to show and honor, pay tribute to Hank Aaron. I tell you, Commissioners, Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Williams, I can't think of a, a higher note to wrap our meeting up this afternoon. We've had a very robust meeting, starting with our zoning meeting and then moving into our Board of Commissioners meeting. A lot of good and interesting dialogue, but I can't think of a higher note to end it on than Hank Aaron. Chief Cabe, is there any reason for us to go into executive session this afternoon?
Mr. Chairman, there is not.
Thank you so much. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Happy Tuesday and this meeting, virtually.